The portables and receivers for all the, all seventy-six municipalities. And I appreciate his response. I just wanted to know if there would be any additional costs down the road, or if this is the total final cost. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other members of the public, please? Mary Nunn, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Ms. Hou, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition, any extensions, unheard, mostly carries. Now going to go to our second public hearing during this evening. The public hearing is in regards to proposed ordinance in 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County ERA. That's the rental assistance program, which is administered through the Office of Committee Development. We're not going to have the president's moment of silence, because we just did it. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houk?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present?
Thank you. We're now open for comment from members of the public regarding the proposed ordinance in Luzerne County fiscal year budget twenty twenty-one, the ERA program administered under the Office of Committee Development.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the ERA, I spoke about this, I asked about this previously regarding the notification to the municipalities. If they're, Mr. Right now, I asked Mr. Riley about if there's a link that he could provide to the municipalities to put on their respective municipal websites, or any notifications that could be sent out. I realize that people, it's not in the dark that the rental assistance program's out there. It's just to ensure that there's proper notification, to ensure that people are aware that it's, the program is still out there and available to those of, those renters and those landlords who need to get their, their rentals, payments and assistance. So if that could be addressed, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public, please? Other members of the public, please? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment? So moved. Mr. Perry, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any extensions, unheard, motion carries. Now going to go for our third public hearing for this evening. Again, I can do the pledge for the moment of silence, because we just done that before. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houk?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
There.
Ms. Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The proposed ordinance amends the ordinance number sixty-five ninety-six, section five, thereby signifying the intent and desire of the council for the county of Luzerne to modify the purposes and projects of the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority, and to authorize the Flood Protection Authority to take all such action as may be necessary or appropriate to effect the same. And this was submitted by Mr. Yenuzy, who's the chair of that authority. We're now open to members of the public. Sheriff Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Richard Adams. I'm a current member of the Luzerne County Flood Authority, and I'm here to oppose any changes in the authority's charter. As you know, the operating budget of the authority is funded by twelve communities of people who are in the seventy-two flood. We are now asking those same people to pay for this expansion. Actually, the lawyers and the staff members right now are being paid with the money from the twelve communities who are in the seventy-two flood, who now fund the operating budget of the flood authority. As Ed Keller used to say when he was on council, we have sixty miles of county road in the back mountain, and we all paid it and maintained that road. I believe the current funding source of the County Flood Authority is unfair. Now regarding Dorye, we currently have similar situations in Hanover, Plymouth, where the flood system doesn't at this moment qualify for the lowest flood insurance payments. We are on it, but it's not complete. I've asked over and over again at the flood authority meeting, what are the risks of the Dorye flood happening? We know the Corps of Engineers have now said that we are in a three-hundred-year flood plane here. So why are we moving so quickly? This was literally brought up a couple months ago, and now we're here trying to amend the charter. I think it's really unfair. They're asking, we may possibly exchange constituents of the seventy-two flood to pay for this expansion. We don't know how Dorye is going to pay for it. They haven't said, and even if they could withdraw the funding. I have no objection to using grant money that we get to help Dorye. My objection is changing the charter so they become an ongoing responsibility of the flood authority. So I'm asking that you deny this request, or at the very least table the request until many of my questions are answered. The other thing that I would ask, and I know Mr. Schnee is here, is we should not have, in my opinion, people from Hazelton on the flood authority. We should have people on the flood authority who live in the flood authority area. I think our interests are not compatible. When you're here along the Sault Ste. Hannah, and you're threatened, you look at things differently than if you're from Hazelton or even Dallas. So that are my many comments, and I'm hoping that this council will see it that way and deny any change, at least at this time, in the charter of the flood authority. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Mr. McGinley, I do.
Go ahead.
So you're on the flood.
I am. I'm just over there.
Thank you for your service on the thirty. Um, my question is about the levy fee, which, you know, I agree with you, you know, and it's, it's been a point of contention for a lot of people in Surrey. You guys on the Flood Protection Authority are the ones who assess that fee.
Correct.
Are you not also the ones who determine who that fee is assessed to?
No, ma'am. The courts have ruled very clearly that the people who are affected directly by the seventy-two flood are the only ones who we could have pay that fee. So the ultimate answer is, in my opinion, that's why I really got on the flood authority, that the flood authority should become part of the county, just like nine eleven, or the, the prison system, or AG. Okay, they can still run it with an advisory board. That way, I think they said it would be seven dollars additional tax for everyone in the county to pay for the, the maintenance of the, of the flood for it.
No, I think the background of that, though, is that the Corps of Engineers wanted it set up as an authority, and that's why it was.
They did, but I agree with you. That doesn't make a requirement. They don't have all the answers. Believe me, the court doesn't.
So are the people in Dorye among the people that pay the levy fee?
No, they're not.
Okay. And if they are picked up, if, if that project is picked up in there, would they not fall under that realm of that group of people that should pay it?
They would not. Right now, the only people who are allowed to pay the fee, according to this court decision, were the people who are in the seventy-two flood. Not only in the seventy-two flood, you have to be directly impacted. So we had some houses in Kingston in the first work, who were not really in the flood. They don't pay. So right now, you have to be, you have to be in the seventy-two flood plane and be flooded to be part of the payment of these fees.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, thanks. In, in the section of the ordinance that they're going to change, I agree with Mr. Adams completely, that if we're going to do this with Dorye, and the people who are directly affected by the fee are the ones that are going to be funding it, I don't think that's fair. I think if the people in Dorye are going to benefit from the flood authority taking care of the task, then they should have to pay their fair share. And I certainly agree with Mr. Adams as well about the court case, because, you know, I was one that fought that case as well with Attorney Mattern and the rest of them. And it was ruled that if you were affected by the seventy-two flood, you were the ones that were paying the fee. So theoretically, that section that says in the, that they want to change in that bylaws, it says the, the purpose of projects of said authority are as follows: to construct, improve, operate, maintain Wyoming Valley flood protection system, to administer the mitigation program associated with the project, and to undertake any and all flood protection actions that said authority deems necessary and fiscally feasible to protect the residents, plural, of Luzerne County as a whole. That clearly states that the flood authority can say, well, we're protecting Hazelton. We're protecting Shikshini. We're protecting, you know, parts south of Nanticoke, West Nanticoke, and those areas, and therefore charge those folks as well, and get approval from the court to do that at some point. I'm not in favor of that at all. I don't think that this is a, an appropriate change, and I'm against it totally.
Mr. Urban?
I, I would have to echo Walter's sentiments as well. I mean, looking at the language, it does say Luzerne County as a whole, so that, in my opinion, is in totality, not just those twelve entities that, that are currently protected. You know, and I think, quite honestly, this is more of an expansive, or expansion of county government, you know, and, and that's what it seems like, and, and I will be against this as, as well. I mean, I don't, I think it needs to stay at, within scope currently, you know, and I think, you know, the, the whole idea behind the Flood Protection Authority was just for the Wyoming Valley Levy System and, and the, the current municipalities that are participating in it. If Dorye wants to jump in it, then, then, you know, it throws a little sort of a wrench into the cog, but quite honestly, I think they need to pay for it, or find a funding mechanism to, to, to join.
Yeah, it is a lack of a lot of river up there, too.
Correct, and that's a, yeah, and they're a totally different system.
Yeah, and, and we're more than willing to assist them.
Right.
What I don't like is the ongoing responsibility of maintaining that system. We have no idea, if, if a pumping section goes, it's a million dollars. Our total annual budget's just over a million, well, like a million and four. So where are we going to get the million dollars to pay for that? And what would keep Dorye from saying, okay, we're, we're having enough of that? New council comes in, we don't want to pay that anymore. We can't do that, because we have a, a court decision that makes us act accordingly.
I mean, and Lord knows, this council has enough litigation that we deal with all the time, so let alone, you know, you add another player into the mix, and then they turn around and sue us in the future or something like that, because we didn't do something correct.
I still think we have to find out what the risk is. I have no idea. I've asked over and over again, what is the risk up there, of them being flooded? No one seems to be able to answer that.
Then that, that's an issue, too. It's legitimate questions. I think, you know, we, we should postpone this when, when it comes to time.
All's committed for voting.
Mr. McGinley, I have one. Mr. McGinley, I have one more quick question. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, whoever was before me.
Mr. Adams, it's Sheila Sageman, and what I'd like to know is, are you the only one on the flood authority that right now is, holds this opinion? Or are you fighting a battle of one person against the rest of the, the rest of the flood authority?
It's a good question. It was a three-two vote. Actually, the one vote was Mr. Dusinger, who was ill, and I know he's, he's in my position, so it would have been a three-two vote to do this. And even the three-two vote, if you read the minutes of our meeting, was to move cautiously. I don't know how we got this far this quickly. I'm actually surprised. I think, if I didn't take that out of paper, I wouldn't know who you're doing this, to be honest with you. At the very least, would you wait till after the election?
Thank you.
Mr. Griffith, did you have another question?
Yes, yes, thanks, Mr. McGinley. Mr. Mr. Adams, on the, on the email that was sent to Acting County Manager Croco Mo, it says Dominic Yenuzy as physical, or PE and CM Project Manager. Does he do work for the flood authority as well as be on the board? Dominic Yenuzy's firm, Buchanan?
I, I don't think so. I think that would be a conflict. I don't think he gets served on the board and also have, although he is in that business, of course, but no, I don't think so. I don't think he does.
Okay.
Mr. Griffith, I don't think there's any work that's being done by his firm with the Flood Protection Authority?
We work lots of promotions.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Our new saying, Dorye is taken out of this equation.
No, I think there's, there might be a different way to do it. First of all, Mr. Schnee, I'd still want to know what the risk is. If it's a three-hundred-year risk, I'm not in such a hurry to do much, like we have here. If it's, the risk is more than that, then they, we, we're still willing to get, help a system get some grant money, although I think they should pay for some of our operating expenses, because why should we have these twelve communities paying for Dorye's expenses? If they're paying for some of the operating expenses, we, if we could get some grants to do that, I'm willing to do that. My, my question is, on an ongoing basis, I don't think we have a responsibility to, to maintain this particular project.
Okay, I understand your concerns.
Sure.
My question last minute, Mr. Yenuzy was here with the funds that are going to be approved in September, with like seven or eight million dollars in upgrades. Some of them were to wellhouses and pumps and different other stuff, which I, I would approve myself, like purchasing a truck and stuff like that, I don't think I'm going there. But stuff that maintains the system itself, I would be in favor.
Sure. No, I, I agree with you. The, the thing that concerns me is that they don't.
I mean, I, I think if any money goes anywhere, that's the first place money goes, because you're saving a people's lives, and you're saving a people's homes, that they worked their whole life for.
Mr. Schnee, I was in the seventy-two flood. I had seven feet of water on my second floor. You know, I, I understand, believe me, and I had three kids at the time that smoked.
And I'm sure that statement with Mr. Yenuzy, I think was a little lost.
I still don't think we should have, whether, it's like having a member from Scranton serve on this committee.
Has he done something wrong?
No, I never alluded to that. He's a bright guy, and he's very helpful, but when you live in Hazelton, it's different than when you live like I do in Kingston, on side of the river, and you pack the constituents. It's a, it's a different interest level.
Well, I think his same concern is the people and, and the people's houses.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, that's.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
That's why we have the hearing. So you have an opportunity. Do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to echo what Mr. Adams said about the, you know, potential for Hazelton to be involved. That, that has been my concern in this expansion of the, of the Flood Protection Authority powers here. I mean, because I, I know, being on authorities and currently being on an authority, that a municipal authority cannot expand the scope of their, their service beyond, beyond the service area that they're in charge of. So therefore, to expand it, to have Hazelton area pay for the, the levy fee for the area, because Hazelton area is not in the levy, in the flood plain, that, that is not fair. I mean, Hazelton area does not ask, I don't believe they ask, we ever asked Luzerne County to pay for anything with regards to any authority services pertaining to the Hazelton area. So I think in kind, in retrospect, I think that the same thing should hold true here. So therefore, I mean, I, I fully agree that, you know, with Mr. Adams, that if, you know, the perspective from somebody from Hazelton like me doesn't have the, the same outlook on the flood plain as somebody who lives in the flood plain. So therefore, I would agree with Mr. Adams. I take him for what he says, and I think that it should be, at least postponed to, for council to take a further look at. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment now?
So moved.
Mr. Schnee, Ms. Sedman, you're going to be the second.
Yes.
All in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, unheard, motion carries. We're going now to our fourth public hearing. This is on the proposed ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-two long-range operational and fiscal capital plan for Luzerne County. This was submitted for June one. Council has to act on that for September one, or the plan that's submitted becomes approved plan. I'm not going to have a pledge in the moment of silence, because we've done that already. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houk?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We're now open for public comment on the proposed ordinance for the two thousand twenty-two long-range operational fiscal capital plan.
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of what transpired over the past day and a half with respect to the power outage, I'm kind of bewildered by, you know, the, the power outage, considering a few years ago, there was an assessment on the energy-saving contract that was, that was adopted by council. And I do believe former county manager Pedri, as well as Mr. O'Neil and the county engineer, was participated in the, the assessment of the, for the energy contract in terms of the power usage. So my question would be to, if Mr. O'Neil, or Mr. Plesh, or if Acting Manager Croco Mo can answer the question pertaining to the, if, when the assessment was done at the time for the energy-saving contract, if there wasn't problems identified for certain areas within the courthouse that would lead to problems with the, with the power system? So I think, or for the electrical, like, the service itself? So I think that needs to be addressed, because without that, I think that, you know, any additional cost might, might be just, you might be overestimating, or you might be underestimating what you actually need. So I think those, those things need to be looked into and addressed before we just put, put in an arbitrary number for the capital plan. I think that, that needs to be looked into. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Other members of the public, please? Other members of the public, please? Do we have a motion for adjournment? So, Mr. Perry, second? Mr. Urban? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition to the extensions, unheard, mostly carries. Now going to move to the voting session agenda, please. Call the meeting order, and we're going to begin with a pledge of flag called by moment of silence.
Mr. McGinley, during a moment of silence, could we recognize Charlie Hatchco, please?
Yeah, Mr. Hatchco. I just noticed this obituary in the paper this morning. He was a gentleman of workforce at the prison, and he had prior experience, I think, as a truck driver. He was a very nice gentleman, and he was very active, and he'd been around the county a little bit. So yes, please remember Mr. Hatchco.
Thank you.
Pledge of flag, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is God. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houk?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Radell?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
Mr. Gillick, do you want to comment on the executive session, please? Mr. Gillick? Can't tell, I don't see his, Mr. Gillick, are you on the call, please?
Yes, I had trouble reconnecting. I don't know what happened. I had no sound. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can. Loud and clear.
Is this the executive session? Yeah, council met an executive session from five PM till five thirty PM. Most were present in council chambers, some by video. We received a report from the administration regarding collective bargaining. Also discussed lawsuit Hasori versus Luzerne County at all. Case number three, eighteen CV nineteen eighty-two dash JMM. No decisions were made, no deliberations took place.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any recognitions or sermon or proclamations at this time. additions or deletions to the voting session agenda?
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Griffith, go ahead, please.
I would like to move the item number seven from the work session over to the voting session regarding the job description for the administrative assistant to the clerk to counsel.
Well, that item had not been discussed before, and according to our bylaws, it belongs on the work session. That's why it's present on the work session?
I don't, could you show me where in the work session, or the bylaws that says stuff has to be discussed at a work session?
I certainly would be happy to show you, but I don't have the bylaws written right now, Mr. Griffith, but I certainly will do that for you.
I'll, I'll look it up, and I'll let you know if it's there.
Okay. Anyone else?
On deletions? I would like, like, yeah, I would like to have the item number six removed from the agenda, please.
Well, we've already introduced that, so I don't think we can remove it from the agenda. We certainly can, we have a couple options, actually. We can approve it, we can disprove it, or we can postpone it.
There was, there were many items removed from the agenda that were ordinances. One particularly is a five-dollar fee is still sitting out there, actually, and there's pending ones out there, so I don't know why we can't take that off.
Well, it was introduced, and they had strong support, so I believe at this point we should be moving forward with that and make a decision. Or we could postpone the decision. That's up to the council.
Can we get a, can we get a vote?
Sure.
How many people would like to remove number six, which regards the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority's articles incorporation?
I'm making a motion to postpone.
Okay, Mr. Schnee is making a motion to postpone.
So we go.
We then get to the, we haven't proved the agenda yet.
The question is whether it's on tonight's agenda or not.
Yeah, we haven't proved the agenda.
So, yeah.
So we can't do that at this point.
Yeah.
Okay? So if you vote yes, we'll have a vote. Vote no, it'll be removed. Okay? Roll call, please.
Wait, so the, the motion is to remove it from the agenda?
That's what the motion is for, Mr. Griffith.
Then if you vote yes, we will not have a vote?
Be removed from the agenda.
It will be removed. So yes means you want it removed.
Right.
No means you want it to stay.
Right.
Okay.
And Mr. Griffith, you made the motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith on that removal?
Second.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, everybody clear? Yes? It gets deleted? It gets, uh, deleted? No? It stays on the agenda. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Your vote?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Okay, so it stays on the agenda? Do you have a motion to adopt the voting agenda?
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition to the extensions? I'm heard, most in carry. Public comment is now open for members of the public to comment on agenda items, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raivo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raivo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on number, item number four, regarding the adopting resolution for approving sales for parcels held in repository, uh, I sent, uh, council and the county manager and, uh, I asked if the solicitor would be forwarded the, the, uh, the statute that was signed by Governor Wolf before the Fourth of July weekend uh, with respect to amending the requirement for, under the tax claim office for LLCs and other entities that the principal owners must be registered prior to bidding on parcels, whether, whether they are at tax sale auctions or repositories. So I wanted to know if the count, if the solicitor would address the issue as far as be, would council, if they would approve it, obviously it would be before the enactment date of, uh, August, I believe, twenty-eighth, which is the same date that the sunshine law would take effect, the amended sunshine law for twenty-four hour notice. So, um, if the council had the option to postpone, uh, without identifying the principal owners of these LLCs, uh, would the, would the council be able to require the tax claim office to get those principal owners to register as principal owners of those LLCs bidding on repository properties, which is going to be a requirement anyway after the twenty-eighth of August? So I would like that, uh, question addressed. And as far as, uh, number, uh, five, uh, with regards to the capital plan, uh, I still would like to know if the assessment would be, was done, uh, prior to the energy saving contract and if they, those items were identified as far as the courthouse electrical system or the service system for the electric, electricity, uh, prior to the enactment of the energy saving contract. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Other members of the public, please. Okay, do you have a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty-seventh, please?
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. McDermott?
Got a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Will, will the public comment be reflected in those minutes as well?
The public, what do you mean, the emails?
Correct.
They're all posted.
So, so yes, basically.
Recording in progress.
Okay, secondly, I noticed that Mr. Urban has abstained from a lot of, um, motions from that. Um, could that be reflected about why he abstained? In those minutes? Great, thank you, otherwise they're all good.
Yeah, we have, uh, anyone who abstains, that's part of our bylaws that they indicate the reason.
Correct, I don't recall seeing his reasons, so I just want to make sure that was there.
I believe, and I'm not speaking for Mr. Urban, I think he's indicated that he's not in agreement that Mr. Croco Mo serving as acting manager, right?
Right, I believe there's a conflict in her position. She's holding two roles right now because there's a resolution on the books from twenty sixteen, uh, twenty sixteen dash fifty that still says that she's acting or a chief solicitor, it was an action of council at the time. So, and that hasn't been negated when you, when, when the majority, uh, put her in, uh, by resolution. So there's no vacancy. You occupy two chairs.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Ross?
Yes, I heard, I just want to make sure it's reflected in the minutes. Yeah, so it can be read, that's all.
That's no problem.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Schnee, will you make that motion to approve the minutes with that addition?
Yep.
And Ms. McDermott, will you second that with that addition? Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
No.
Mr. Urban, Mr. Griffith, any extensions? Thank you. All business.
Uh, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, the section of the bylaws, seven G, seven G of the bylaws says each piece of legislation is encouraged to be reviewed by county council at a work session prior to its final passage. This rule may be suspended when time is of the essence, as determined by the council chair. If appropriate, after a matter has been reviewed by council at a work session, it may be placed on the agenda for future county council meetings for voting. So that's the section that you were, uh, referencing, I just wanted to read that into the record, that we can actually bring legislation at a voting session if we want to, right?
You can bring in an ordinance if you have it, uh, ready to go with all the printed information, et cetera.
But not a resolution?
Right.
Okay, so the resolutions that we have on the agenda tonight cannot be voted on tonight? Because they weren't discussed?
They've all been at the, uh, work sessions.
Uh, the one about the advertising for the count, the county manager search committee was not?
Yes, yep, we talked about that.
For advertising?
Us, indicated, uh, last time we would talk, we already had, um, money set aside, indicated some figures. Yes, we talked about that, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Oh, al- also, I'm sorry, Mr. McGinley, under old business, I, uh, one more thing for the, um, uh, Ms. Hartman brought up the issue about detectives' policy for, uh, letting people in state in the rotunda of the courthouse. And the answer to, from, uh, Ms. Croco Mo was that, uh, she made the determination that that could happen. And I was just one, I was just wanting to know if council needs to pass policy for that or is that entirely up to the discretion of the manager? And what does that, who, who bears the cost of that?
Well, I don't have the answer for that. Uh, I think we probably researched that. Mr. Dillucka, Croco, you have a response for that?
Uh, Ms. Croco Mo should have a response for that, I would say.
I do, uh, I actually do, uh, it's, uh, it's my interpretation that the county manager, uh, has the authority over county buildings. And I made that decision, uh, out of respect, uh, for the detective and his family. It, uh, has been done, uh, before, uh, and, uh, I will make that decision again, uh, because I have the deepest respect, uh, for our law enforcement, particularly our detectives, uh, who work, uh, to protect the entire county. Uh, and, uh, I have that respect for them in their life. Uh, and I will have that respect, uh, for them, uh, in their death as well. And, uh, uh, it is, it's the policy, it's, it's a, a, a prior practice and, uh, I will continue that, uh, when requested.
The, the, if I could follow up with that, uh, Ms. Croco Mo, the issue that we have with weddings, is that a policy of the county that we, you could have a wedding in a rotunda and you have to pay a certain fee? Or is that a, a, a decision of the manager as well?
Well, the, the fee, uh, was, uh, a decision of the previous county manager. So yes, it is a decision of the county manager. And, uh, the individuals who relate to rest in the rotunda were former county detectives. And they have served, uh, the county, uh, well. And, uh, it is my belief that in order to honor their memory, uh, that they would be allowed to line state.
So, so if anybody else wants to use the rotunda, the request would go to you, is that correct?
It goes, actually, there's, uh, I, I believe, and, uh, Mr. O'Neil, uh, if he's on, he, he can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. There is an application process, uh, to use the rotunda, uh, for weddings, uh, and/or, uh, any other event. But the request, uh, for, uh, the detectives to line state came directly to me.
Okay, all right, just so everybody knows what the procedure is, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now to agenda item one, motion to adopt the ordinance amended two thousand twenty-one fiscal budget for Luzern County, this is particular to the nine one one project, we have a motion.
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Okay, Kendra. On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance amended two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzern County ERA, which is the rental assistance program. We have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Urban? You have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. McDermott. On the question. Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Radel? Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Abstain. Reasons before mentioned.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Yeah, ten yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance amended two thousand twenty-two long range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzern County.
Present.
Mr. Schnee, do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Howe? On the question.
On the question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. McGinley, on, uh, the total, it's on the, uh, night, the twenty twenty-two long range operational fiscal and capital plan. That total's going to change if we adopt the ordinance or the, the budget transfer today for the, uh,
Actually, uh, Mr. Griffin, we'll be looking to do that budget transfer for the two thousand twenty-one capital plan, so they can do that immediately instead of waiting to two thousand twenty-two.
Correct, but the total will be different from the twenty twenty-two plan that we're adopting now, correct?
Yeah, the start total will be different, but we can, you know, we'll add that correction if we do pass that.
So we're going to have to change the, we're going to have to amend the twenty twenty-two long range op- operational plan to reflect that total once we, uh, make the transfer, correct?
That's right, we're going to have to make a change there with the starting monies and then obviously the final tally.
Okay, so that'll have to be another budget amendment then, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving the sales of certain parcels of property held in the repository by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC, acting as Luzern County Tax Claim Bureau. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Howe, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? On the question.
Uh, Mr. McGinley, I'd like to make an amendment to the, uh, resolution.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Uh, I would, I would like to amend that resolution to reflect that we are removing all the LLCs or company corporations from the list and vote on the ones that are not corporations.
So we want the LLC corporations removed from the list? And then the remaining list would be what we would be voting on, is that correct, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Vito.
Yes, go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, I think we had sort of, we had discussions about this last time. Uh, hire Elite Revenue Solutions to handle everything with regard to assistance with this. Uh, I'm concerned that there may be legal issues, uh, related us picking out a class of purchasers.
Is that your comment, Mr. Dillucka?
Yes.
Okay, so you have concerns that if we remove a group of people, that we would have potential legal issues, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Common question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ross, go ahead.
Yeah, part of our due diligence as a selected body is to make sure that prospective buyers don't have any latent utility bills overdue or things of that sort. So that's kind of hard to do when you don't know the principles of these LLCs. So, um, I don't think there's any issue with this whatsoever, I support the measure fully.
Okay.
Question, Mr. McGinley, question.
Mr. Urban person and Ms. Sedman, go ahead, Ms. Sedman.
So has the Office of Law or anybody done any legal research about the new law that's in effect at this point to disclose the principles of the LLCs?
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Radel was correct, it's not in effect until the end of August, I think.
I mean, sure.
Well, prior to that.
Just to be clear, also, from our, from our perspective, from the Office of Law, I thought I made our position as an office very clear last time. We have Elite Revenue Solutions that does, uh, they have a legal team, they're experts in this field. Uh, I had suggested that the, uh, uh, Committee of Counsel that deals with the real estate coordinate with Elite Revenue Solutions, if there was any assistance that our office could provide, we would do so. Um, at this moment, as I sit here, I'm expressing a concern that, that by us choosing classes of, uh, purchasers out of the group uh, to exclude from the purchase, uh, that that could be a problem. I don't know that for a fact, but again, this is something that, uh, I had, I don't know whether it was cleared with Elite Revenue Solutions or not. I, I completely understand, and I said this last time, why there could be concerns about certain classes of purchasers, people from out of the area buying up properties and then selling it at large, uh, prices to, I've heard the horror stories and I completely understand what council's concerns would be. All I'm doing is saying that I have a concern that there could be a legal, uh, issue, uh, with council doing this. If, if council goes forward and it does it, um, again, I at least want to be on the record as expressing my concern about it, I don't know where, whether anyone cleared this with Elite or not.
So can I, can I follow this up then and just say, you know, let's just postpone it till next month? It's only a few weeks away.
Well, the sentence next, but, but, the sentence, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I remember Vito's arguments very clearly and if the law is going into, uh, affect August twenty-third, then why won't we just wait till then?
Well, I think it's August, I believe it's August twenty-ninth, so, uh, you know, whatever. It's, it's going to be later this month, we know that.
You know, some of these people have been waiting since twenty nineteen to purchase these properties.
Uh, Ms. Howe just expressed the fact that we've had many people waiting for, in some cases, over a year. And I don't think it's, to be honest with you, I don't think it's correct really to do that now. If you want to change the format going forward, procedures going forward, saying that all bidders must comply with this, I have no problem with that. But to ask these people who have been waiting for this period of time uh, to now comply with a, a new stipulation, I think it's somewhat unfair. That's my.
Mr. McGinley, if I could, if everybody's had a chance?
Everybody else have a chance?
Mr. McGinley, I thought, or is this gonna happen in August where request the principal of that LLC to show identification at the sales?
At the, at the sales?
I think that was one of our, that we were discussing a month ago. That the principal of the LCC, LLC shows his license.
Shows his identification.
Yeah.
The Council votes to do that thing, yes. And I think we all, pretty much everybody felt that that was good.
Right.
However, you know.
I mean, that was in our conversation.
Yeah, do you want to do that now, you know, approve these and start that, you know, policy? That, that's a question, I think we all do want to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Griffith, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, I, I mean, I, the, the concerns I have with these LLCs is kind of what the spreadsheets that I sent back to Council as well as I shared with Sean Shimani regarding the procedures that are done after the sale on bidding, and that's why I'm concerned about these LLCs. We don't know who the principal owners of these LLCs are. We don't know who's, who's bidding on behalf of them. As you saw from some of the spreadsheets that I sent to Council, some of these properties that we approved over a year ago still have not been picked up by the bidder who actually put a bid in on these properties. So there's some serious concerns about our procedure here on this repository property, so. I mean, I'd be more than, I'd be more than happy to change my motion to table this until two weeks ago, I understand Ms. How's concern about people who have been waiting and I, and I certainly don't want to have those people have any undue hardship by waiting two more weeks or even another month. But I don't think it's fair to Council, and we did ask, I think Leanne did ask Elite last week or she sent an email and asked Elite if they could identify the folks who are principal owners of these LLCs at, so we could approve this at this meeting. And we didn't get the email, so either Elite doesn't, doesn't have the information or they can't get it quick enough for this Council. But I don't think it's prudent for Council to approve LLCs not knowing who the principal owners are at this juncture. I mean, I don't have a problem approving the other ones, clearly we know who, who the bidders are, but not on LLCs. So, you know, that's why I made the motion to pull the LLCs out until we find out who the principal owners are. Because we have obligation to the real estate law to identify that. So, I mean, that's basically why I want to pull them out. I understand Mr. DeLuca's concern. We're not, we're not unduly targeting, we just want to identify because we have an obligation according to the law. So that's why I made the motion and hopefully my colleagues will support it.
I do want to say that I did talk, when I did talk to Sean, in reference to what Vito was saying, I did talk to Sean Shimani and he said if we had problems with anything, to keep those out of the sale. So, you know, I didn't check back with him after the last meeting to see if that would be, could be a legal issue. But at that point, he said we had a problem with any of them to keep them out. Now, I don't know if we say particularly to an LLC on business, you know, does that mean discriminating against them, I'm not sure, but he said if you have a problem with any of them, to pull those out rather than wholesale.
Unfortunately, discrimination issue was decided by somebody else, not us. That's, you know, where that comes down, who knows at that point.
Mr. McGinley, just, if I could, just say one last thing.
Go ahead.
We hire, and I said this before, we hire Elite Revenue to handle this process. I do not know the process, I'm, I'll admit, I'm not an expert in that process. That's why we have an independent group that comes in with their own team of lawyers that understands the rules, understands what the limitations are, what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. This is something that a policy could be considered by Council. I think all of the ideas are, I think the same way. I've, I've heard the horror stories of, you know, people hiding behind LLCs and purchasing properties and selling it for double or triple what they got it for to, to the neighbors. I get that, but the reality is, this is something that, this process is very strict. It's statutory, it's described in very great detail as far as what is supposed to be done. And, and if we on the fly mess with that without getting approval from Elite that what we're requesting to be done is, is legally compliant, then we will be getting ourselves into trouble. And that, I am going to defer to them, they're the group we hired to handle this. They will be on the hook if they approve a, a policy or handle a sale in a way that is not, is not in compliance with the law, as they expect to be. But if we're going to make changes on the fly to how we consider these or determine whether or not we'll approve them, then I think that's a perilous path. And that's, that's all I'm saying, I would, I would hope that any changes to policy would be approved in writing by Elite and, and then we could go from there and at least be confident that if it's wrong, that, that Elite, it takes responsibility for that. That's all I have to say.
Calling the question, Mr.
Mr. Chairman, five minutes.
Mr. Snee just called the question, Ms. How.
But the debate's not over.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I'll second the call for the question. I'll second the call.
Second the call for the question?
Yeah.
So we have the call for the question with the second, Mr. Ha, sorry.
Yeah, this is on the amendment, right?
Only on the amendment.
Right, okay.
We're only talking about the amendment that Mr. Griffith proposed, which is to remove from the list of parcels the LLC corporations. And that was seconded by Mr. Urban. You've heard the comments and arguments both ways.
Mr. McGinley, I, I can make this easier, I'll withdraw my second at this point in time, make a motion to postpone the entire sale for another three weeks.
Wait a minute, now you withdraw your second?
Right.
Somebody else seconds it, motion's still there. Somebody else second.
Second, Sheila.
So now can we have discussion since there's a new second?
No, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Ha.
Just to be clear.
Good try, though.
Nice try, I know, I know.
Yeah. Just to be clear, Ms. Sedman is seconding the removal of the LLCs from this list.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so the amendment is to remove the parcels that had LLCs as the bidding agent. And that was by Ms. Griffith and seconded by Ms. Sedman. If you vote yes, they're removed. If you vote no, the whole list stays as it is.
And to clarify, Mr. Chair, we're not disproving them, we're just removing them for approval for this meeting. So we're not disproving anything, which I don't think invalidates what Mr. DeLuca is talking about.
Well, you got your comment, Mr. Ha, but.
Yeah, you got that, good.
That's, we have that motion on before, for the amendment. Roll call, please.
I have the question first. Mr. Griffith asked for an amendment to the resolution. The resolution, I'm looking at it, only says, refers to the attached list. So is this amendment to the list or to the resolution?
It would probably be part of the resolution because it would be removing sections of the, of the bidders who are LLCs, so the list would become different. That's correct.
But, but the list is not there until it gets attached to the resolution. So if we change the list, there's no need to change the resolution, or am I incorrect?
I think, I think we have to do it this way, thank you.
Yeah, but you're, you're correct, Sharon, I, my, my motion was to remove the LLCs from the list. That was my motion.
And the, the list is part of the resolution, that's in front of us. Roll call, please. Vote yes, they're removed, you vote no, the list remains the same.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, no.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Okay. We're back to the motion to approve the resolution. Ms. How made the motion, Mr. Perry made the second.
Make a motion to table this for now.
Motion to table, so no discussion. Mr. Urban makes that motion, do we have a second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Table it, it's moved off of the agenda. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. How?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, eight no.
Okay. Back to the motion to approve the resolution, Ms. How made the motion, Mr. Perry, the second.
I just have one comment.
Go ahead.
I appreciate that Elite Revenue did all the work on this and they're experts in their field. I think there are three duplicate properties on here. I think thirty-two and forty-nine are the same, thirty-four and fifty are the same, and sixty-one and sixty-two are the same, they have identical parcel numbers. I don't think that affects the vote, but I think we need to be aware that the list is, you know, needs to be maybe policed a little bit.
There, there were, but in the second list when they were separated, there was only one duplicate and that was on the LLC. So there are ninety-two properties.
Okay.
But that was on the second list, again, you know, the separate.
Right, okay.
Okay. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain for reasons stated earlier.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Ha?
No.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado? Ms. Rado?
Ms. Rado, are you muted?
Yeah, sorry, my volume wasn't working.
Okay.
Yes, but I'd like to abstain from the parcels that Exeter Borough, whose company number one is bidding on.
Okay.
Point of order, you can't do the, can't do a partial.
Yes, you can.
Can't. So it's up or down?
Up or down?
No, the vote is on the resolution, it's not on the list.
Yeah.
So then I'll abstain from the entire vote.
Okay. Ms. Lawrence, go ahead.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Who knows, two abstentions and seven yes.
Okay. Number five, introduction of an ordinance amended the capital plan budget for Luzerne County LCCF, which is the prison, and that's the two thousand one plan. We have a motion.
Present.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
On the question?
Is this the resolution, Mr. McGinley, I'm sorry?
It's an introduction of an ordinance amended the capital plan for Luzerne County, the LLC facility, which is a prison facility.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, well, we can get to the vote yet, but, okay, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. And number six, motion to adopt the ordinance amended in Luzerne County Flood Protection Code's articles of corporation.
Motion to postpone.
So I have a motion to postpone by Mr. Snee. We have a second for Mr. Snee.
Second.
Mr. Urban? We're talking about the motion to postpone, not talking about the motion to amend the ordinance, okay? On the, on that question? Anyone on the postponement? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Okay. And number seven, introduction of an ordinance amended in two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, and that's for the cap conference expenses, we have a motion.
So moved, Sheila.
One second. Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
We had a discussion about this and I think maybe Mr. Griffith might have raised the issue at some point. Should these be resolutions or a budget amendment? And I think the final I got, the last thing I knew, this discussion was that they are resolutions and the resolutions are on your places for council. Ms. Lawrence says place those there. So instead of a motion to adopt the ordinance, we'd be looking to approve the resolution. Am I right, Mr. DeLuca?
I don't, I don't know exactly what you're asking me.
Well, we talked about should these be budget amendments and I think you had Ms. Craig work on those and I think her interpretation, and I think Mr. Griffith, you may have had some input into this that they should be resolutions instead of a motion for a budget amendment.
Yes, that's, that's why I was wondering what we were doing on the budget transfer for the long-range optional fiscal plan, because that was a resolution, that wasn't an ordinance. And we introduced an ordinance at the last vote, correct?
For which, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, for the, for the capital plan, for the, for the correctional facility. That should have been a resolution and we did it as an ordinance, correct?
Uh, we're doing that one as a budget amendment for the two thousand twenty-one ordinance. These are from the, the we can't do a resolution there because it's a little different than the, these resolutions. That was our discussion, so.
Well, well, there's a resolution in our packet for the county council approving a budget transfer of funds for the long-range optional plan for the repair of the prison. That's a resolution, so we have a resolution in our packet and we approved it as an ordinance.
We have, yeah, we have an ordinance and a resolution.
And that's, that's why I was questioning it earlier on when we were started.
Back, let's go back very quickly to number five.
I reconsider.
Yeah. And we'll go back and reconsider this.
Second.
Who was, who made the motion?
I moved to reconsider it.
Okay, Ms. How made the, the motion to reconsider it and Mr. Snee made the second. We had all the discussion. Roll call on reconsidering the fifty thousand dollar transfer for the Luzerne County prison.
Your introduction of the ordinance?
Yes.
Right.
So introduction, we're doing a resolution, correct?
Well, but I think you have to recall the introduction of the ordinance. So that's what the reconsideration would be.
Okay, that sounds logical. So you're saying.
So I take a motion to.
Reconsider the introduction.
Right, to reconsider the.
And Mr. Snee made the second.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Can we just do that by a simple up or down, like I?
Yeah, we could do it anyway.
It's a motion.
Roll call, but.
Yeah.
All in favor of reconsidering the introduction of the ordinance, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any extensions? Those unanimous. Now, do we have a motion to approve that transfer of fifty thousand dollars to the prison from the capital plan?
So I think we need to revote on the introduction of the ordinance. And we're, we don't want to do an ordinance.
Yeah, so we reconsidered it already.
No, we moved to reconsider it, to, to reconsider it.
I thought you said reconsider.
Yeah.
You said move to reconsider, reconsider.
No, that was it. We moved to reconsider. Now the reconsideration is that we're going to undo the introduction of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Mr. DeLuca, you okay with that?
Yeah, so the issue here is that the agenda itself was not changed to reflect the change from an ordinance to a resolution. Is that it?
Yes, and we do have the resolutions available, and they are posted.
Got you. Okay, yes.
But we already introduced, we already introduced the ordinance, so don't we have to reconsider, don't we have to take a new vote on the introduction of that ordinance and not introduce it?
Yes.
Right, and then we can, then we can start clean with resolutions.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, Ms. Hou, are you making that?
I move to not introduce that ordinance.
You have a second, Ms. Hou.
I'll second that, Walter.
Oh, I think Mr. Urban got in first, but, okay, since it's an ordinance, we should have a roll call, please. This would be to not introduce that ordinance. Okay, I would pass to the order and signature.
So a yes vote means we're not introducing it. We're undoing it.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Okay, so we've taken the introduction off the board. We have a motion for a resolution.
I move to introduce the resolution.
Oh, it's not the introduce, right?
Or I moved, I moved to adopt the resolution.
Very good. Ms. Hou, you have a second. Mr. Schnee? On to question. Roll call.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, going abstain because it's going to require the acting county manager's signature.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no, one extension.
Very good. So now seven, eight, nine, and ten will all be resolutions instead of introduction of ordinance, okay? We have a motion to approve the resolution for the cap conference expenses.
So moved.
Ms. Hou, you have a second from Ms. Hou?
Second.
Mr. Perry? On to question.
On the questions, Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Hou.
I'd like to change that amount from two thousand dollars down to fifteen forty-three, and the reason being is that the registration fee was four hundred dollars for three members, plus the travel expenses to and from county courthouse is a hundred and fourteen dollars. Therefore, it gets us to a, just shy of fifteen thousand forty-three, I'm, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred forty-three. I know it's only about five hundred dollars, but nonetheless, we're just trying to keep the budget accurate, so I think that's the only amount to be to transfer.
Question.
Go ahead. Mr. Hou, Mr. Hou, are you making that as amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have a second, Mr. Hou.
Second.
Mr. Schnee? All right, Ms. Sedman, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think you have to take the mileage from the courthouse. You didn't come to work first. Mileage should be from your home to the event and back to the home, not the courthouse. I'm sure it's only a mile or two, but it's, it's not necessary to do it from the courthouse.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
The reason, the reason that there was two thousand dollars was just a guestimate, really, because we had not received the receipts from the three members who attended or the mileage information, but we wanted to make sure we had money to cover so we could pay. And that's why.
Exactly.
Right.
And that's on, that's a good assumption, Mr. Chairman, so I'm just, I'm just trying to true that up, but I mean if.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, that's why we put two thousand dollars to make sure we had more than enough to cover the whatever mileage or whatever chances. Okay?
Mr. McGinley?
Mr. Hou, do you want your amendment to stand?
You know, to, to, to make, I mean, Sheila and Walter, they both live on the west side, where Walter's in the back mountain. How about fifteen, fifteen hundred fifty dollars?
That's a new amendment?
I guess.
Yeah, it is. So are you making that motion for fifteen fifty?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee, are you okay with that? All right, Mr. Schnee's okay with that. Everybody understand? Any other issues?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
On this, on this, are we only entitled to mileage one time to the courthouse and back? So if you drive back and forth, you get paid once, right?
That was my understanding, Mr. Griffin, but I, you know, I would say that's up to council, I believe.
Okay, so Harry, when you drove from the C cap to where you stayed, do you not get reimbursed for that? That's expense?
Yes, that's, you should.
How about Ms. Sedman, when she drove to wherever she went, or was picked up, obviously, but, but I mean, I, I appreciate Harry's ability to narrow this thing down to the nickel. I get it. But there's other expenses that are involved by other members that attended, possibly. Now, if that's the rule, that we only get paid one way, that's fine. I'm fine with that. I, I need to know that, so when I submit my expenses, we know, but it says expenses are paid.
Sorry, could you make it sixteen hundred so we could?
Why don't we leave it at two thousand, and then if there's any money left over, we can transfer that.
So, it's fine.
You know, it's not like the money's.
It's like The Price is Right, sure.
Yes.
I withdraw all my amendments. All of them.
Mr. Schnee, okay with withdrawing those amendments? Okay, we don't have any amendments on the board. So, but we do have a, a motion for the resolution for Ms. Hou and Mr. Perry. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, abstaining, since it's a resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no, one extension.
Thank you. Number eight, it's a resolution to amend the, to, to put money in the two thousand and twenty-one budget for the county manager's search committee advertising. And Ms. Lawrence gave us a sheet today that has an estimate of money that has been spent in that regard, and we're still on one outstanding bill from Press Enterprise. As you can see, the money spent is about two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy cents. She used a estimate of three eighty-three eighty for the advertising for Press Enterprise, but as you can see from the other newspapers, the second round of advertising was more money than the first round. So the resolution calls for two thousand dollars. I think we need an amendment there to cover that expense.
What's up with the standard speaker?
Well, the standard speaker is part of the citizens' voice.
I know, and they charge seven hundred twelve dollars.
Yeah.
When the citizens' voice charge.
First of all, we have a motion for the resolution.
So moved.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second for Ms. Sedman? What is that, Ms. Radel? Was that Ms. Radel's second? Okay, Ms. McDermott? Now, do we have a motion about an amendment?
I move to amend it to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay. Ms. Hou makes an amendment of twenty-five hundred dollars. Do we have a second for Ms. Hou?
Second.
Mr. Perry? So this amendment would change the amount of money in the resolution of the advertising expenses to twenty-five hundred dollars instead of a thousand dollars. Okay? Roll call on the amendment, changes the dollar amount to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
What was that, yes or no?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one extension.
Okay, going back to the resolution, Ms. Sedman, you made the motion, Ms. McDermott made the second. Are you okay with adding the amendment to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hou? Yes, okay. So we have a resolution with a new amended dollar amount? Going on that resolution, roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Radel?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one extension.
Thank you. Number nine, we have a resolution to set a budget of five thousand dollars for the manager's search committee, as a result of a work session two weeks ago. Do we have a resolution to approve that?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, for five thousand.
Five thousand, correct. Mr. Hou, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? On to question.
On the question, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
Uh, under section two of these resolutions, uh, if council would take a look at the resolutions, there's nothing that says what line items these transfers are coming from. So I'm, I'm having some concerns about, it says that we're going to transfer funds from the reserve fund. What number is that? To the recruit, recruitment expense line item. What number is that? There is no account numbers.
It's on the back of it. It's on the, it's under that. It says.
All right, thank you, thank you, Wendy. I didn't, I did not see that on the other side of the page. Very good. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification. Then that, then that's fine. I'll withdraw my concern. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one extension.
Okay. Number ten, a resolution to assign twenty thousand dollars for a budget for the legal firm of Stevenson Lee. Do we have a motion? Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Radel? On to question. Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstain.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Ha?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
No, it's a waste of money.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no, and one extension.
Thank you. Over to number eleven, on the next page. First, we need a motion to approve the number of members that would be part of the manager's search committee. We have a motion.
I move that we appoint five members, Mr. Chairman. Harry Haas.
Okay, five members. That was Mr. Hou. Do we have a second for Mr. Hou?
Second.
And that's Ms. Hou. On to question.
I'll make a motion for seven.
Well, we have to vote this up or down first.
Sorry.
Only one motion, but I think that's not going on.
Well, he could amend it.
He could amend it if he wishes, but if he wants to make a motion, that's.
Yeah, I'll amend it to seven.
Okay, you have a minute to seven members, and that's by Mr. Schnee. Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second vote.
Okay. We're talking about the amendment, which would make the number of members for the Luzerne County Manager's Search Committee seven members. You vote yes, the number of members would be seven. You vote no, go back to the first motion by Mr. Hou. Okay? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Ha?
No.
Ms. Hou?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
A lot of recognition.
Yes. Did you hear?
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no.
Okay. So now we go back to the motion that was paid by Mr. Hou, second by Ms. Hou. Do you agree with the amendment? United, we've five to seven. Mr. Hou and Ms. Hou, she did the second.
Well, it's majority rule, so sure.
Okay, Mr. Hou?
Yeah, same.
Mr. Hou? I'm sorry, I just. I'm sorry, I just.
Told me to affirm the motion?
No, I'm what I'm saying, you made a motion for five members, the amendment changed it to seven, so your motion was on five members. Are you okay with making a motion to approve seven members?
Sure.
Okay. So we have a motion now with the amendment to seven members. Mr. Haas made that motion, the second, Ms. Hauck made the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
Okay. So now we're going to have nominations and appointment. We have seven slots that we have to fill. Ms. Lawrence had sent out today to council members the 14 people that interviewed with the information that they have provided. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
So moved.
Ms. Hauck?
Second.
So Ms. McDermott, a second, all favor, open nominations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Can I ask a legal question?
Well, we're just opening nominations. Any in opposition to the abstentions? What's your question, Ms. Urban?
Are these going to be done by resolution?
They don't have to be done by resolution.
Just by motion? Okay. I'm just making sure, because if you do it by resolution, if the, you know, acting county manager's signature is on it, if she should become a candidate, it's kind of signing, you know, off on the, on the individuals that are going to be part of the search committee.
Okay.
That's, that's what I have, I think that would be a conflict.
Okay, someone else wanted to speak?
We did do a resolution, it's in the packet, that's how it was done the last time.
Okay, I just think it'd be a conflict of interest if the acting county manager puts her name forward and signs up on these individuals currently.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go around, you'll have seven, you'll provide seven names. Of the candidates that you wish to serve. If they get six votes, they become a member of the committee.
We're not doing nominations?
After we do a nomination, just.
Oh, right, okay, okay.
Yeah, we just open nominations, okay?
Mr. McGinley?
Nominations are open.
Mr. McGinley? I'd like to nominate, I want to nominate that Musto.
Mr. Musto, and that's Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith? I don't hear any second, Mr. Griffith. Other members, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Chris Hackett.
Nominate.
Harry Haas.
Mr. Haas should be next, okay, Mr. Perry was in first, okay, but you're next, go ahead. Mr. Morelli, Mr. Morelli, by Mr. Perry, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Haas, go ahead.
I'd nominate Chris Hackett, please.
Hackett?
I'll second.
That's Mr. Haas, and Ms. McDermott's going to second that. We still need.
I'll nominate Mr. Patty.
Mr. Patty? That's Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Yes, Sheila.
Ms. Saban?
I nominate Mr. Hayden.
Mr. Hayden is nominated by Ms. Hauck, do we have a second for Ms. Hauck?
I'll second.
Ms. McDermott?
I nominate, oh.
Go ahead.
I nominate, uh, Ray Wendelowski, I couldn't get the name out, Ray Wendelowski.
Okay, Ray Wendelowski. That's by Ms. Saban, do we have a second for Ms. Saban?
Second.
Mr. Schnee?
It's Kendra, I'd like to nominate Alec Rinkevich.
Alan Rinkevich, Alex, I'm sorry. Ms. Rado? Do we have a second for Ms. Rado?
Second.
I'd like to nominate Brian O'Donnell.
Where, who was?
I was, Sheila.
Okay, Ms. Saban, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Sherri Omankow.
Omankow, Sherri. That's Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott for Ms. Omankow?
Second.
Ms. Saban?
I'd like to nominate Brian O'Donnell.
Who is making that nomination?
Matt.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Thank you, we have a second for Mr. Vog?
Second.
Ms. Saban?
I nominate John Magania.
John? How did you pronounce that?
Magania?
Okay.
I believe.
I think you're right, but I'm not sure. Ms. Hauck makes that, a second for Ms. Hauck.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, very good.
Motion to close.
Anyone else? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people have been nominated.
I'd like to move Mr. Brian Dwyer, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dwyer did not interview, Mr. Haas.
I'd like to move Mr. Brian Dwyer nonetheless.
I don't think you can do that, we said they had to come in for an interview. That was a agreement among the councils that you'd have to commit for an interview. He withdrew on his own, Mr. Haas.
Okay. In that case, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Like to move Mr. Walter Mitchell, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Walter Mitchell. Mr. Haas, do we have a second? There are none?
Motion to close nominations, vote.
Mr. Vog, motion to close nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Wright.
Oh, we have a motion to close nominations.
Okay.
And that was by Mr. Vog, do we have a second for Mr. Vog, Ms. Hauck?
Second.
Okay. All favor, closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any extension? Unheard. Nominations are now closed, so just bear with me as I go through the nominations. Ms. Morelli, Mr. Hackett, Mr. Patty, Mr. Hayden, Mr. Wendelowski, Mr. Rinkevich, Ms. Omankow, Mr. O'Donnell, Dr. O'Donnell, I guess, Mr. Magnetta. Those are the people that have been nominated and received a second. Nine, right? Everybody okay with that? We're going to go around by roll call, indicate which are the candidates to support, you have up to seven people you can support.
Mr. McGinley, that, I, Mr. McGinley?
Yes, I hear you.
That was changed, it was, what we're doing is one seat at a time. Because then the person would have to get six votes.
That was, that was ABCs, but I'm fine with that, that's what people want to do. Oh, people want to do it. Manager search committee is not part of the ABCs. If they want to do it that way, I'm fine with that.
I think there's less confusion if you do it that way.
I have no problem. One at a time? Everybody okay with that? We'll start with the first person who was nominated, that was Ms. Morelli, indicate, you say yes, that's in support of Ms. Morelli, if it's a no, it's not support of Ms. Morelli. Okay? Roll call.
No, that wasn't, what we do is go around and you would give a name for seat one, not vote on each name individually.
I think that's more confusing.
Yeah, it's like what Ms. Haas.
Okay, what happened?
Yeah. Mr. Morelli first.
So we're doing yes or no on Mr. Morelli, is that correct?
Right.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Rado?
Yes.
Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
Okay, Mr. Hackett is the second one nominated.
So do we need to make a motion to approve their resolution appointing these people?
We'll do that after.
After this, okay.
All right.
Yes, we will make that motion. Mr. Hackett is the person who was nominated. Roll call.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eleven, zero unanimous.
Very good. Mr. Patty? Is the third candidate.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Six yes, five no.
Okay. Mr. Hayden?
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog? I'm sorry, Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Thank you. Mr. Wendelowski?
Ms. Hauck?
No.
McDermott?
No.
I'm sorry, I.
No.
No? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Six yes, five no.
Thank you. Mr. Rinkevich?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Ms. Omankow?
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
Dr. O'Donnell?
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
And Mr. Magnetta?
Magania.
Magania, sorry.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
My calculations are correct, we have seven people who have reached the threshold of six or more votes. Mr. Morelli, Mr. Hackett, Mr. Patty, Mr. Wendelowski, Mr. Rinkevich, Ms. Omankow, and Dr. O'Donnell.
You have one more candidate, though.
Mr. Mitchell.
Right.
You get a second.
Oh, he didn't?
He didn't get a second.
Oh, okay, never mind.
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I have an extra for him. I'll pick a second. Everybody in agreement on the seven candidates? Okay, now we have to do by resolution. We have a motion to approve Mr. Morelli by resolution.
So moved.
The statement seconded by Mr. Schnee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve Mr. Hackett by resolution.
So moved.
Ms. Houck, you have second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, I think this time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Motion approved by resolution.
Thank you. A motion approved by Mr. Patty by resolution.
No.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, excuse me, who's this for?
This one right now? This for Mr. Pat Patty.
Okay, uh, no, and I need to go back and change my vote on one after we're done.
Uh, you know, when we're done with this, we'll take care of that, please.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, yes. Okay. Mr. Griffith, what's the, uh-
Uh, the fir- the first one we did, I thought we were voting on Mr. Morelli and we were voting on Mr. Hackett, I believe. And I voted no. I need to change my vote to a yes on that one, if I could.
Yes, for whom?
Uh, Mr. Hackett.
Uh, Mr. Hackett? Was eleven oh, uh, but on the resolution, you voted no, is that what you're saying?
That's right. Yes. Yes, I needed to, yes. Yes, please.
Okay. Please record that as part of the minutes, Ms. Lawrence. Okay, we're moving down to Mr. Wendelowski. Motion to approve by resolution.
So moved.
And Ms. Radel's second. Roll call.
Who was first?
Mr. Perry, followed by Ms. Radel.
Thank you. Houck?
Uh, no.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes, three no, one extension.
Okay. We have a motion approved by Mr. Incavage by resolution. Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott? Second. Mr. Perry? Roll call.
Mr. McDermott?
Mr. Incavage.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Ten yes, one extension.
A motion approved by Ms. Manco by resolution. Mr. Schnee, do you have a second for Mr. Schnee? Ms. McDermott? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
We have a motion approved by Dr. O'Donnell by resolution. So, Mr. Perry, do we have a second for Mr. Perry?
Second.
Ms. Houck? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Abstained.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, two no, one extension.
Thank you. Now, a public comment on non-agenda items. We're open for members of the public. About public comment on non-agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raible speaking.
Okay, Mr. Raible, first, and then you'll be next.
Uh, I'm not surprised at all by the manager search committee member picks, really not. It's par for the course. Uh, second, uh, with regards to what Mr. Solicitor Vito De Luca had to say about the, sale of repository properties. I kind of, I kind of, uh, have to grimace as far as with the, uh, foreshadowing of discrimination, when there is no proof of it. So I would like to know, uh, if he has such concerns, if he could forward me that, uh, his legal opinion in writing, so I could send that to the State Blight Task Force, who worked on this legislation that was, uh, signed by law, and to, and by Governor Wolf before the Fourth of July, so they can, uh, look at it. Because several years of work by the State Blight Task Force, uh, you would think that they would pretty much be able to pick up on any kind of foreseen discrimination. Uh, and also, I would like to ask, Mr. Chairman, if you, of members of council, feel so strongly in abdicating your, uh, policymaking authority under the charter to a hired contractor. I don't care who he is. First of all, he doesn't even live in the county. I mean, his office is in Luzern County, but he doesn't even live in the county, for God's sakes. So, I, I find it disconcerting that somebody would, especially, uh, that was, uh, I believe, under, the, the previous company he worked for is under, was under federal investigation. But now, I mean, he just changed the name and he just is now assuming ownership. And he basically is taking over the tax claim, uh, contract, uh, which was renewed by, uh, lame duck council. You know, it's, it's kind of disconcerting. So, if I could get that in writing, please, I'd be appreciated. And also, with regards to the work session item on the airport authority, I think that, uh, the option to have the airport authority look into getting their own local law enforcement, or hiring their own law enforcement under Act 120, would be beneficial under the long run, rather than hiring county detectives because of the pension obligation. And I think the county retirement board should look at assessing the, uh, increased obligation, uh, in terms of overtime and the cost of, uh, the county detectives to add on a new role. And I do believe the code would have to be amended for that job description to be added on for the county detectives. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Chris, what's your last name, Chris?
Uh, Zomerfil. Zomerfil?
Zomerfil.
Yes.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just, uh, I don't know, um, you guys can hook in contact with the district attorney. I tried calling, no, no call back. I called my local police. And I called the state police, they say, "We gotta go local." I tried calling DA, if somebody, if I'm in contact with them, that'd be great. And then I just had some concerns, uh, I believe it's Hillside Road and Huntsville Road, is that a county road?
Well, it depends on what parts that you're talking about, but go ahead.
Well, from Hillside, like the dairy, all the way up to, I'd say, Penn State.
Go ahead, what's your comment on, sir?
Uh, just that the roads are deplorable, you know, most county roads here. And, I mean, it's nothing new, but if they could be fixed, I mean, you guys are facing lawsuits, you know, if somebody gets hurt. I just wanted to make, uh, known, you know, these roads that need to be fixed. You guys buy money for other things. I see in the, the arrows, like the police cars, four or five grand in police cars, but our roads are deplorable, so how good are those cars if the roads are bad? That's just one of those. And then, uh, I just had, um, again, with the police, the use of powers that's written or signed that you guys protect, you know, against that. Who do I speak to about that?
Or you have to find, what police department?
Well, no, I mean, it says here, you know, the county council. I mean, usually when I come here-
Oh, that's Luzern County. That's Luzern County Charter pre-aimed.
Yeah, yeah. And it says you help with the public use of powers. So, um, I was wondering if you could put somebody in contact, you know, with that as well. Concerned with regards to Port Daleboro.
I think you have to start with the Port Daleboro, so it's, it's, it's-
Yeah, I do. I mean, that's why I'm here, is I call, I call you back. It says leave a message, leave a message. So I've been doing that for months and actually years. Again, use of powers, nobody calls you back, nobody wants to do nothing. They just want to turn you around in a circle. So, um, again, if somebody could hook me in contact, you know, with the district attorney and somebody to speak to here, you know, in regards.
That's it?
Yeah.
Yes, the attorney's office is right across the hall, all the way here.
Yeah, yeah, nobody's ever, you can't speak to anybody.
That's a elected public office, which is independent from the council. So you, you have to deal with that office directly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other members of the public?
Mr. Zomerfil? I, I would suggest us as well, if you have an issue with other agencies, uh, we don't know the nature of the issue. So, quite honestly, you, you might want to also reach out to the Attorney General's Office of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and possibly the FBI, depending on whatever nature of the issue is. If you feel that there's public corruption, there's an arm of the Attorney General's Office that can help you and the FBI can help you.
Yeah, I called the FBI, I got, uh, last night.
Well, the, the state also has, uh, agents.
And corruption's everywhere it goes, FBI, their president, you know, it's a White House, but it's pretty dark inside.
Well, not knowing the issue, I mean, the county council can't step on them, municipalities, so it's, though, as far as certain things. So, uh, we're separate, separate governments, separate agencies. But, you know, if you have corruption issues, you can contact the DA's office. If then, the DA can't help you.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
Uh, I, I would like to bring up an old issue. Uh, I don't know if it was resolved or not. With the license, um, refunding of the money for the people that paid for the licenses. Was that, was that ever taken care of or satisfied? And the second question is, the funding that they were going to use to compensate the, uh, rain tax, is that still an issue that's never been resolved? Uh, I'll sit back and listen to the answer. Thank you very much.
I think the five dollar fee is still, uh, being discussed. And I'm not sure what you want with the stormwater fee, uh, but we have a discussion on that, we'll have more discussion on that. Other members of the public?
So there was no resolution for either one of the two problems, correct?
I, I think you heard what I said, I don't have a resolution, Mr. Manta. We have a motion for German.
Mr. McGinley, before we, before, Mr. McGinley? Before we adjourn? I just, I just want to, I just want to take a minute to thank council for sending me to C cap. It was a wonderful three days down in, uh, Ergie. Uh, we, we learned plenty, it was great. We had a good time of camaraderie with the other counties that were represented there. It was an experience that everybody on council should experience. Uh, the information that we, we received at that conference was phenomenal. And at some point, I know time is limited, but at some point in the near future, we can give a report. But thank you to all the members of council for allowing me the opportunity to attend. It was very beneficial and very helpful. Thank you so much.
I will, I will echo that.
Okay, Ms. Sedman, thank you. Ms. Haas made a motion, Mr. Schnee made a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. If you're in opposition, be in attention, unheard, motion carried. It's now almost, it's almost seven fifty. Uh, eight o'clock, you'll come back and we'll start with the mid-year presentation.
I guess.
That'd be great.
Just so I don't screw this up for our country. The seven committee members are really happy.
Yep. Okay, it's eight o'clock. Call meeting to order. We've already done the pledge of the flag and moment of silence, so we're ordered to see. We'll call Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffin?
President.
Mr. Hug?
Here.
Ms. House?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
There.
Radel?
Here.
Dedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
President.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Your vote?
Here.
Mr. McGinnly?
President.
All present.
Thank you. Dismissions or deletions? Motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. McDermott, do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hug, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposition, if consensus is none heard. Mr. Swatz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Chair McGinnly. On your screen is the 2021 media report. I think everyone knows that the media report is required document. I am not going to go through every page in this document. I'm just going to go through some of the highlights, speak about some of the things that have changed during the year, and then leave a spot at the end for questions. And as with any of my presentations, if I can answer something tonight related to the mid-year plan, I will. Related to the report, if not, I can get some information. But the first page is just a cover sheet. So Jared, if you move on, please. So as I said, this is a required document. So per the whole, through the admin code, sorry, not the home rule charter, this is required. We put the percentages of budget, eighty-one percent for revenue and forty-six percent for expense. I will tell council that revenue is a little bit higher and expenses are a little bit lower than last year. And you'll see that on the, on the top sheet, some of the higher level detail. Some of that has to do with bills actually coming into the county. Some of that has to do with some remote work that obviously happened during the year. So, you know, every place is not back five days a week. I had three conference calls today and none of them were in the office five days a week. All private firms, no, no governments, but all private firms and none of them are at this point back five days a week. So next page, please. As you can see here, this is a high level summary and I'll spell some of it out at the end. We really can see versus last year. Again, year to date isn't as important as the budget. A lot of these ones that are very low, the percentages, are the ones that are low every year. So you could see that proceeds and interest that, you know, we're low because we're always low. And the anomaly of interest being twenty-two thousand last year with some of the, some of the cares money. And you'll see some of that with this year's money, but it just didn't happen in June because we didn't get the money until late in May. So you'll see some of those things happen a little bit later in the year. I'll go through taxes. There's a slide kind of at the end that talks about taxes. A lot of the other items are close to fifty percent. Debt service for any council members, most of that's November. We do pay some interest payments in May, so that's relatively normal as well. By no means would I want anyone to think that because we're almost fifty-seven million dollars ahead that we're going to end there. That's not going to happen. The revenue is going to start to level out and we should be at or near a hundred percent. I know some years we might have got to one-on-one and obviously the expenses will catch up. Next slide, please, Jared. So this is just some of the detailed revenue and I'm not going to go through line by line, but I will stop at this one. This is also in a, in a bullet point at the end. So I did mention taxes and this lists three of the main tax lines. And you could see the percentage versus the budget as well as where we were last year, year to date. And if everyone remembers, when we actually did the budget, we talked about some of these KOs using Lerdas ten and twelve years being up. And that's why we expected more real estate revenue. That's why we budgeted more revenue than prior years. And to date, we've received it. We still need to be cautious though, because as everyone knows, we budget the money for the year. We don't have a certain amount budgeted at discount. And if more people pay a discount and we still get the same amount at the end, we actually have less cash flow. So it's one of the things that we monitor during the year. But you could see, you know, the tax sale actually having one and the municipal realty tax. I'm sure everyone has read, heard about the real estate market this year in comparison to other years, where I read something where the average time in the market is twenty-four, twenty-five days. As everyone knows, that's, that's very quick turnaround time. So it does appear that the economy is starting to come back. We also had a lot of stimulus money pumped in this year as well as the advanced child credit. So bills are being paid, people got, got money and have put them towards their county bills. Next slide, please. So this is just the detail and this is some of the stuff we go through in the budget process. You know, there's so many lines when you have gun permits and games of chance and we break it down by three days and yearly. And it was one of those things that it's nice to have all the lines for detail, but maybe we should put them into like a roll-up where we have something that makes it a little bit easier, not just for this presentation, but for the budget. You get a lot of lines, you obviously see the percentage in last year's number, but you get a lot of detail and sometimes, you know, a line has two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and you're figuring out if it's at fifty percent. Where on, you know, over a hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar budget, three-hundred-million-all-funds, it's really immaterial. Next slide, please. So, so as you look, as you look at the slides, whether it be for the dog license or the, the room and board, again, this is just a detailed report. So council has it. It is the same report, the same basic format that you get in your monthly report. Next slide, please. So this is just some of the, you do see the fee totals, but the way the page breaks come out, when you print a report from New World, it doesn't line up exactly on the slides. It would require a lot of cutting and pasting and having a fifty-side presentation instead of twenty. But you can actually see the totals for the grant categories, the rent categories. And if you remember the audit report, and you may or may not, these are, when you look at the top sheet and that last sheet that talks about just the general fund, the basic ten or so categories that revenue and expenses are totaled into. Obviously, we have hundreds of lines. In some places, we have thousands of lines. But this rolls them up into, when you get that one sheet for the audit and then all the detail behind it in the auditor's report, it tells you the subsections. And really, that's what we look at. We're not looking at every single line. We're looking at where the, where the subsections are and where they are versus last year, as well as where they are versus the budget. Next slide, please. So now we're going to go on to the expenses. So that means slide, I'll talk about the first one first because I know that came up last year. So wages elected officials is at fifty percent for every office. The reason that it's skewed to sixty-five percent is that our tax collectors are paid per bill. And you saw the tax collection number and that lines at eighty-two percent. So no tax, outside of tax collector, no elected official is not at fifty percent. The budget wasn't incorrect. They weren't overpaid. The reason that's not exactly fifty percent or very close to it is because the tax collectors are elected officials and their budget is at eighty-two percent. And that skews the whole total. You'll see a lot of the other ones are very close to fifty percent, slightly over. Retirement, I talked about last time, the payment was made in July. So we paid what was the actual amount. The five-point-three-three-nine million was one-half of the amount that was given to us. So we budgeted, it looks like maybe slightly more because it's at forty-seven percent. But we will pay the amounts that are budgeted and if there's a slight true-up, do that at the year-end. So the money is in the plan in a timely manner. Next slide, please. Next slide, sorry. Next slide, please. Sorry, Jared. This is some of the other detailed expenses. You'll see repairs and maintenance, the insurance. Again, all this is here for your information. We. Sorry. This, this page shows all of your expenses, kind of in the other category, some of the electric and sewer. So you'll see the amounts. And on the last two or three slides will highlight some of the items that are severely either on the watch list where we're over budget or we think we will end up over budget. And then some of the items where the revenue we think we are at or will exceed the budget. Next slide, please. So this is the end of the non-personnel cost section. All the first section was all of your personnel costs, including the overtime, the elected officials' wages, all of the, any kind of health benefits related to the employee. Next slide, please. So here's the major, obviously, there's many pages before there. But here's our major areas of concern and things that we're watching. The first two are new and the third one is kind of a recurring topic. So county overtime general fund. So it's not just a prison. Luzerne County, like many businesses, is experiencing turnover, employee shortages. Even outside of COVID, there were, there's some turnover and some of our positions, they're just, people don't stay in. We also have some positions that are twenty-four-hour operations. So you will see that there's quite a bit of overtime. I do expect that most of that could be made up from the wage line. If it's not, our intent is to take it from that revenue line, so we would still be on target. As that first line said, we think we're within budget parameters at this time. And if we're not, we would alert council. So the intent is to take that from either the wage lines in the individual apartments or to make up for it with the revenue lines. The second slide, our second bullet point, the budget and finance investments in the P. Carter Avenue. When we put the budget together, two years ago, investments were at two-point-five percent. I think everyone knows they're nowhere near that rate. So part of that is the investment rate. Part of it is the amount of money and the time we're putting the investments out. I think last year we did it closer to June. Our staff focused on getting the audit out the door. We had a manager change. We worked on everything that was in front of us and I would have liked to get it out sooner, but it's going to happen in August. I believe in my last report, I said July. We'll have some additional funding to make up for that, meaning we'll be able to invest more money, but it's going to be for a shorter period of time. And the P. cards, I think everyone sees it, especially at your local, I'll say restaurants, but it's a lot of the mom-and-pop businesses, that a lot of places, even if they didn't charge before, are charging a credit card surcharge. So, you know, our intent was to eliminate paper checks, get people paid electronically. And we would obviously get a percentage of that fee as with the third-party provider. And three years ago, when interest rates were high, that might have been a great idea. But right now, we're struggling. I think everyone is. We're, so those two programs together, there's no way we're going to hit that budget number. And the last bullet point, the grant revenue, every year, eve- again, even pre-COVID, we talk about state and federal revenue where during the audit, we have to accrue money that we haven't received a check, that we only got the first quarter payment in June or at September, we only have two payments. Uh, that is the, always the case. We have to monitor that and make sure that we're going to get the money. We always do. It's a timing issue where sometimes it ends up where the check is physically received in the next year, but for accounting purposes, it would be in 2021. So those are the three major areas of concern. And the next slide is the highlights. So I think the highlights I touched on before, the improving the economy, the stimulus money, how that has equated to higher tax collection. So we went through the, the first slide of the tax revenue, which wasn't just current, it was prior and municipal realty tax. Uh, also hotel tax is increased. And so you'll see that, you know, tax collection for the current. So when you put them all together, current, prior hotel tax and municipal realty tax versus the budget, we're at 90% uh, versus 84%. So that's where we were last year in the media report. That's where we were this year. So we think between, you know, watching expenses, uh, making sure that the revenue doesn't even out, that we have excess revenue and watching those couple areas of concern that we should be within the parameters of the budget. Next slide please. So this is one that I, I just wanted to talk about briefly. Uh, we've, we've had a few meetings and discussed it. So the American Rescue Plan Administration continues to send seminars. We have a reporting seminar tomorrow. Any seminar that anyone has, uh, whether it be C cap, Naco, sponsored by an accounting firm. Uh, we get on to, any information we can get is helpful. So I think everyone's aware, we have 66 expense categories. And some of those expense categories are going to need uh, a lot more detail than something we provide in the audit report. So something like an immunization clinic would just be something like, here's a test site and here's the invoices. But if you were to take on a project like broadband, you would have to show that it was in an underserved area of the county, how they were identified. Did you talk to a focus group? There's much more uh, reported and even in the cares in this round for American Rescue Plan. Uh, we do believe that the things that were involved in the cares. So you know, any first responder overtime or PPE, vaccine clinics, things like that, we don't necessarily think we have to wait for. Uh, everything else, I, I believe it's prudent to wait for the final rule. We had that discussion a few weeks ago. Uh, and just to give everyone a reminder, that estimated date is September. It may be late August, but we're thinking September. Uh, once we get something, we'll share the rule in any applicable material. You may get something concurrently, uh, whether it's from your state representatives or from C cap. But as soon as we get something, we'll share it with council. Then next page please. So that really just a spot for questions. Again, I know that this is a yearly report. Uh, I'm available every two weeks for the meetings. But this is kind of where we are for the year. There is uncertainty as there was last year. There is this year. Uh, obviously we're not out of the woods. So we're still dealing with, now it appears to be the COVID variant. So all those things, uh, taking a, a, a big impact on the finances. And that's maybe the least of our impact. The health impact may be more important. But for purposes of this report, there's a lot of uncertainty going forward. So if something were to change in any of these lines where materially administration didn't think we could make something up and we had to make a change to reimburse overtime. Obviously we would go before council before any of that was done. But at this point, even though it's almost the middle of August, as of the numbers for June and even going forward, we're confident that we have the revenue to cover the expenses. But it's something that we'll monitor from now until the budget season and even during the budget season. So I'll end there and leave it for any questions related to the report.
Questions, go ahead, Ms. Hoff.
Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, thanks for the, um, overview, Brian. Um, and it is really not like the budget reports we get each month because uh, usually those are broken down by division. I think that would have been very helpful. While it's good to see how each of these lines, uh, fares across the county, like countywide. Um, I think it really is probably, well, it's more helpful to me anyway, as one council member to see how, um, how each division is doing independently. Uh, and the only place, uh, so the only place that debt service is mentioned, I believe in this report is on uh, the first page, uh, which is the, the overview, the budget by account classification. So I just have a question about that. We have, um, $26 million allocated for debt service this year. Um, we have to date, year-to-date transactions is $6.6 million. Um, why is the other 19 million not encumbered? That's an actual requirement that the debt service has to be paid. Why is that not listed as encumbered funds?
Uh, I would agree that it's a, that debt service has to be paid. We've always paid it all along and I know you know that. Uh, we do encumber things in the report and we can encumber the debt service. We do realize that that's not 19 million of free money and that those payments will come up in November. So we could do that going forward. I agree that it's not, you know, the, it's got to be paid. So I wouldn't have a problem when we go and do our true up. I just saw with the healthcare, which two or three years ago, we used to just do once a year. You know, we true that up on the quarter and try to get monthly detail of encumbering the debt service because we absolutely are going to pay it.
Right. But I guess then my question is also on debt service, why only 6.6 million has been paid out? That's like, uh, 25%.
Yeah. So on that point, it's, it's the, the way the principal and interest schedule set up. So when PFM came in many years ago, not just last year, the intent was to stabilize the debt service payments. So we didn't have wild swings in amounts and or interest terms, uh, hence the refinancing that we did. So the idea is that the interest-only payment is what's due in May. And in November and December is the principal and interest payment. And that's why we don't pay much in May and June. And you'll see a much smaller number. Uh, it's because you're paying interest only in the first half of the year. Where the second half, you're paying interest and principal. And it was set up that way to keep the debt level. So we didn't go from 20 million to 26 million, back to 20 million.
Well, no, I get that. But I mean, when you pay your principal, the sooner you pay your principal, the less interest you pay, right? So, uh, you know, it just would seem to me that we should have paid probably 50% of our debt service at this point in the year, rather than defer paying on the principal until, uh, you know, until the end of the year. But uh, at any rate, I do think that the $19 million should be encumbered. Um, you have $2 million, $2.4 million of encumbrances and non-personal costs across the county. What is that? Is that primarily contracts that are extent, that, uh, we, we, um, are committed to pay?
That's, that's primarily the, in the prison. So in be- in the prison system for things like our prisoner healthcare and food and things like that where they will hit their number. The prison staff actually encumbers those during the year, uh, and, and they hit those numbers. So all of that, or a good portion, it may not be all. I'd have to check if it's 100% all. But most of that is encumbrances within the prison for third-party providers, whether that be, you know, a, a food service provider, uh, any kind of s- service, bed sheets, any kind of, you know, their, their own prisoner healthcare plan, which we talked about. So that's what's primarily encumbered.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Sure.
Um, Brian, I was just looking at 560 dot 35 prisoner care health. Is that going to go over significantly since it's at 100% now?
I don't know if it's going to go over significantly, but it's definitely going to go over. It's one of the things we're talking with, uh, the prison about. Because obviously the cost is the cost for healthcare. Uh, so we need to sit down and say, where are we going to get this money from? And that may be something where if we don't have the revenue to cover it, uh, we may come to the reserve, pay it out of revenue or come to council and say, we need to do a transfer because I would agree, not just because it's such a high number, but there's, there's very little chance that that line is going to stay there for the rest of the year.
And, and you know, the second part to that question too, is like if any of that expense in the prisoner, uh, for, for the prisoner care, uh, the health portion, has any of it been COVID-related and is any of it reimbursable?
But that's one of the things that we have the prison working on. I, I believe some of it would be. I don't have it right now. Uh, one of the things I anticipate having for council, and again, council will look at the whole ARP plan, is reimbursable general fund expenses. Not like last year where we funded the money because we got the money this May. But if there is time in the 24-hour operation, particularly the prison and 911, that is, uh, you know, can be attributed to COVID, we would be able to get reimbursed through the rescue plan. And I would wait for the final guidance even on something like that. But I wouldn't be, I, I would think there's a good chance we may come to council with a number and say, this is something that we should do. Uh, obviously, as we said before, the rescue plan items, council will vote up or down. But I would think that we absolutely want to help, you know, any projects we could. But if it's something COVID-related and we can get reimbursed for, uh, and, and to show a truer number for the budget, not just 2022, but going forward, I think we absolutely should do that.
Yeah. I mean, I was just thinking, you know, like if, if a prisoner did contract COVID, that, that, that would be a reimbursable expense. I mean, I think that was one of the basic premises of the money.
Other questions?
Yes, Brian, it's Sheila.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to say, uh, after being at C cap this past week, I can tell council, and I'm glad what you said about the, uh, rescue funds. There's only one county council that has spent any money. Um, that's North Hampton. And the rest are all waiting for the final regs in September, although um, as we, I think they'll be maybe early September, if not late August. But, um, there, there were no, only North Hampton who had already distributed some money to nonprofits.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more question.
Well, he can go ahead.
Mr. House, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Linda. Hey, and, and just to pig, to piggyback on what Sheila just said. Um, we're on the C cap funds. Yeah, some counties have dispersed funds and program. The North Hampton County actually paid workers to get vaccinated. I mean, that's just because they, they did, it doesn't mean, necessarily only mean it's right. I totally disagree with that. That's a whole nother conversation. But what we did find out, and Sheila was at the seminar with me as well, that an acceptable use, and again, current acceptable use, because we know everything's in flux, um, is that we can pay our LCTA and our HPT share to the state. That's an eligible use. And I think if we could do a budget transfer, again, what, this is down the road, Brian, but when we start to prepare the budget, I'm sure your staff and, and Ken imagine is already doing that. It's only two months out. If we could look at this year's match, that we can consider taking it from the, from the COVID funds as well as do a budget transfer for last year, would save us 1.4 million dollars out of our general fund. So again, C cap, uh, Walter spoke about earlier are so beneficial. And, uh, I'm, again, Homestead, nobody told me that that was not an appropriate use. And again, a lot of people are indeed gun shy, just like Sheila said, that they're, they're waiting. But again, I still believe that is 100% acceptable use. And we'll just see if the federal government changes their minds in the future. But please consider those, um, the public transit matches as you craft the budget. Thank you. Just to comment, unless you want to say anything, but just a compliment on my end.
Okay, Ms. Hoff.
Yep. Uh, the, one, one more question, Brian, is, uh, we're going to be talking about the ADP uh, contract later in the, in the meeting. Um, what line item is that under? Is that 550 dot 15?
Yes, it's other, under contractual services in budget and finance. So in this roll up, yes, it would be under other contractual, uh, and the detailed one by departments, it's under other contractual in budget finance.
Right. And do you know, I'll tell you what piece of that budget, uh, that line item it is? How much of it is?
Uh, roughly, because again, I, I don't have exact numbers in front of me. I would say that's roughly 145, 150,000 dollars.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Okay.
Mr. McGee.
Go ahead.
Brian, I, and this is a question that maybe you might have to get back to me on. I'm not really sure. But earlier tonight, we did a budget transfer for monies for the prison to be, uh, repaired at the main building. And we transferred that money from the, uh, capital plan. Uh, 194, 50, 43, 15, 550, 15 is where we put an additional 50,000 in there. That line item already has 2.3 million in it. And I was wondering, do you have an idea of what that 2.3 million dollars is designated for under that's, under that section of the, uh, 194 fund, uh, 550, 15?
So for the 194 fund, the, the actual, for the capital plan, that's actually in the plan. I think there's only two projects. I know Mr. Pless and Mr. O'Neill had one. Uh, as, as we knew, the capital plan as presented on June 1st only had 170,000, I'll say. I don't have it open. But roughly 170,000, uh, we're now moving 50,000. Uh, I think part of the, of that line is encumbered. But again, I will sit with, uh, Mr. Kovac and his staff. I don't think we're at 100% as of June 30th. But if you look at expenses, and I, I've mentioned this before, but to kind of reiterate, because I, you know, until Mr. Urban brought it up, and you brought this up, the total percentage of budget includes the encumbered amount and the actual expenses. So if we have 2.3 million for the prisoner health contract and to date, they spent 1.3 and they encumbered 1 million, it's going to show 2.3 as expense and at 100%. So I will sit with his team. Uh, he has a budget analyst. I believe though, that it's probably going to be close, but it is not to the point where it's at 100% and we need to move money tomorrow. And the transfer for the 194 fund, uh, everything is under, uh, the other contractual because the 194 fund's under the engineer's office. Uh, the engineer's office ones, the 194 fund, it's under Division 50 uh, under Mr. O'Neill's discretion. So yes, on this one cheater that has kind of all divisions and departments, it would be in that total. But the 50,000 we're moving would be for, uh, the prison, but it's accounted for in the 194 fund is engineering regardless, uh, of what department it's in. And that may be something that we should change, but that's the way the funds were set up because honestly, 90% of the funds or more are really operation-driven for the capital plan. Very rarely would we have something for another vision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving down to the next item, Ms. Crocomall.
Uh, thank you. Uh, and I know we have, we still have the district attorney and we have to discuss ADP. I just want to highlight just a few, uh, uh, items on the division report. Uh, I'm always, I, I, I'm overwhelmed, uh, and, uh, very impressed with the numbers, uh, when I review, uh, these division reports. But there's a few I do want to highlight. Uh, our sheriff's department, uh, received, uh, for service and they served 167 PFAs. Uh, I want everyone to know that when the sheriffs, uh, are serving those types of documents, they are actually, uh, putting themselves, uh, potentially in harm's way. And, uh, I appreciate their efforts and, uh, uh, and, and, and we all should, not only just in county government, but, uh, i- in the county as well. Uh, also the personatory, uh, opened 934 cases. Uh, that's a civil division, uh, of, of the court system. It's the backbone of our court system. And they are processing those numbers. Uh, and of course, 911 always impresses, uh, they took 38,758 uh, calls with a five-second ring time. That is, uh, utterly and totally amazing. Uh, and then finally, I really want to thank, uh, publicly, uh, Dave Parsnick, uh, Ed O'Neill, uh, Bill McIntosh, Mara DeMara and, uh, Bob Dunn, uh, for really, uh, uh, hitting home runs yesterday, uh, getting the, uh, county, uh, courthouse, uh, up and running. Uh, Bill McIntosh came in on his day off, uh, to assist. And I can tell you that, uh, Mara DeMara and Bob Dunn worked well into the evening to make sure, uh, that our to make sure that our Wi-Fi servers and our internet was up and running for the court today and the courthouse today. So I want to thank them personally. And of course, if there's any questions about the report, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Eddie, anyone? Flower tent, please.
That will be Eddie O'Neal.
Good evening, council members. I have before you a proposal that was emailed to me from the Ancilio family, Tim Ancilio, co-owner of the flower tent. This is very similar to the lease request that had been made over the course of the past two and a half years. As a matter of fact, this fall lease typically one in the spring and one in the fall. I believe this one is the same number of days as you will see from the summary that I provided to you as last fall. The amount of money is the same for the lease period, the number of days, and therefore the daily lease rate is the same as what was requested at this time back in 2020.
Questions for Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would just like to add, if I can, that each year when I get these requests or twice a year semi-annually, I always extend a question to the members of our county, a team that reside in the 44 annex that includes magistrate Barilla's office. It includes our veterans affairs department. And I always reach out to them to see if there is any problems or potential conflicts with them using that, utilizing that space. I have done so again with this request, and I have received confirmation from them that they are fully comfortable and have no issues whatsoever with the flower tent utilizing that space for the fall season.
Thank you. Number four, District Attorney Sangla Dolce.
I'm here.
You, we have your contract here. Want to speak to that, please?
Certainly. I think everybody is aware of the facts. Avoca bowed out of their contract. They had a 30 day cancellation provision because the township was not interested in taking it over. The airport asked us if we would do so and agreed to the reimbursements we requested. Essentially, there's very limited liability for the county. I thought it was in the county's best interest to have supervision over that law enforcement authority for many reasons. Essentially, it's required by TSA. We have all the pieces in place to take over. Naturally, we wanted the county government to be involved in that decision, but I actually don't see a downside at the point where we're at. It's better, I think, for the district attorney's office to have supervision than pretty much anyone else in Luzerne County. As you're probably already aware, there's a very small portion of that airport. It's actually a tiny slice of land at the end of the runway that's in Lackawanna County. Our costs are paid essentially. So we're asking the county to allow us to move forward and take over that law enforcement authority.
Questions for the district attorney?
Mr. McGinnity?
Go ahead, Ms. Griffith.
Okay, so my, my question, my question may not necessarily be for the district attorney, but has the airport board approved this transaction at all?
Airport board did not approve it per legal review.
Is, is there any reason why Avoca Police Department did not renew their contract?
My understanding, Mr. Griffith, is they're having difficulties with staffing. And because of that, they were not able to be able to staff the airport as they had in the past.
And who are, who is going to be people that are going to be hired by the district attorney? Is it going to be former Avoca Police Department officers?
I think that's a question for the district attorney. Yeah, I can speak to that. We have approached every person, we have approached every person formerly.
Yeah. The other one died.
I had the other one in since 6:30.
Would you, would you turn that off, please? Is it off? No, that's okay. Go ahead. Mr. Sangla Dolce, go ahead.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we had a little interruption there, but I think that's taken care of.
Okay, I can speak to that. We have approached everyone formerly employed through whatever organization, primarily Avoca, of course. We have extended to numerous people the opportunity to continue in that employment. And to my knowledge, I think most of them have agreed. We've also extended that offer to other departments. And quite frankly, because it, as you all know by now, it's only part time. So we've accounted for, you know, there are a number of people who will only can work Saturday mornings or they can work various shifts. We plan on having more positions than we need so that we can ensure every position remains part time, under 1,000 hours a year, under 30 hours a week. I've coordinated that with Mr. Parsnick, make sure we don't run afoul of any federal laws that invade, you know, whether it's benefits or pension or any, anything else. But yes, to answer the question, I think that offer has been extended to everyone that used to work there so that no one loses employment. But quite frankly, if there becomes some problem, we're going to be able to supervise. I know that there were a number of issues, not severe issues, but they have to perform to the standards of the district attorney's office. And I think that's something that everybody on council would want everyone to abide by. I thank those people for their service. And I'm hoping that everyone will continue because they know the job very well. They've done it. You know, most of the people have done it for many years without incident.
So, so you're not going to be using any of the current staff that's in the district attorney's office to perform this job? Is that a fair assumption?
I, I wouldn't say that. If there is, if there is an opening or a shift that requires to be filled, I know that a number of our drug task force members have signed up. They're willing to work in the, in the event that we need shift or sign up for shifts. If I needed to assign a detective to ensure that a flight would get out on time and not, you know, cancel the flights, then I absolutely would do that. But it's my plan basically to have more people than I need that are not full-time employees of the county so that I could fill those shifts well in advance and have a plan, have a backup plan so that need not occur. But if any detectives worked that shift, they would have to agree to work the shift for what the contracted amount and not their overtime amount that, that would not be allowable unless it were an absolute emergency.
And, and the other, the other question that I have is one that obviously Mr. Raybo raised about, why doesn't the airport just hire their own police department to handle the situation there instead of involving the county district attorney?
I, that email was shared with me and I appreciate the information. I guess my response is a question of, well, who's going to do that? I mean, I guess in, in, in the abstract, it's nice to say that the airport is starting, you know, they have an authority and they can start a police department and they can make sure everyone act 120 trained and they could fill a schedule. I guess that's possible. It seems, this was, this was brought to us on an emergency situation. Who's going to do it? It isn't like you, you can't, you can't wake up one day and just say, now we have a police department. There's a lot involved in that. And I think it's, I think all of you appreciate how difficult it is to run a police department. We have the pieces in place and we're able to actually fill these spots in less than 30 days, which is, I think, a lot of people deserve commendation for that. I think, and I think it was the Allen Town Airport was the example given, but that, that model was not put in place over the course of 30 days. If that's something that the airport authority in Luzerne County and Lackawanna County wanted to put in place, I welcome you to do it. I certainly wouldn't stand in the way. I guarantee you, you couldn't do it from this point within 30 days.
And the agreement that the LEO that was sent to council has a lot of blank spaces in it. Are they anticipate, are you anticipating filling in those spaces for us before we have to vote on this agreement?
I don't know the, the form of the agreement that was sent to county council. The last form of the agreement that I sent to the office of law was a red line form. The only blank spaces that I'm aware of were things like the date. Actually, don't, I basically, I adjusted to my terms, shared it with the office of law who approved it. And I think we're now going to send it to the airport authority. I don't know of any unknown terms, you know, unless the airport were to reject something. So my apologies, I didn't, you know, that, that copy wasn't shared with me. The last copy that I'm aware of were the changes that our office required in order to move forward. So I don't know of any uncertain terms, at least in my mind.
Now, the copy that we have doesn't have how many part-time officers are going to be hired. It doesn't have how many you're going to, it says the airport agrees to retain blank to supply qualified LEOs. You know, there's a lot of blank spaces in this agreement. It's probably not the same one that you're aware of. So, you know, I would like to see a complete, a complete agreement, but yeah, I mean, again, it can, go ahead. I'm sorry, Sam.
So as, as to the number of officers, that, that depends on a number of things. And I would confirm this with our insurance carrier today. There's a difference between the, the number of positions, obviously, there's only going to be one person working at a time. So there really isn't a difference in the number of positions we create. So if we hire 20 people, there are only, there only one can work at a time. But in the mind of the insurance carrier, if they already work for the drug task force, for example, they are already county employees, so there's no change there. My, my estimate at what we have now, and obviously we need the officers to agree, but it's eight to 10 outside employees and probably eight to 10 current employees that will fill those shifts. And that number could adjust. I don't know, you know, if, if one person can work 1,000 hours a year, that's great. If one person can only work 100, then we need 10 people to work 100 hours. So the point being, I don't have that number only because we have to distinguish who is already on the, you know, county's roster and who is coming in with, for example, the former Avoca officer, the former Pitts Township officer, Pitts and City officer. We have a lot of people willing to sign up, and I think partly because they're part of a county organization that they know, you know, they're, they're willing to sign on to. I have a lot of people calling that want to sign up. So I think that number is in flux. We're going to, we're going to pick a number when we can ensure that all of the shifts are going to be covered that won't negatively affect the county's liability. And if we have to fill those shifts with task force officers temporarily until we set the schedule, you know, obviously, everything's in flux in your first month, but the number might change, but it's not going to change by much.
And this has to be approved by the airport board, right?
The airport board. They approved it pending the approval by Luzerne County.
The airport board did?
Pending the approval of Luzerne County. If they did, you know, Luzerne County wasn't going to approve it, then it wouldn't be approved.
So this was discussed prior to the issue that we're, that we found out about that the, because I asked, was the airport board aware of this? And I was told, no.
Well, we discussed it at the last meeting. And once the minutes are approved, they can be released. I talked to attorney Frederickson, but the minutes have not been approved yet.
Okay, but I just asked the question right before and it was sold, but it wasn't discussed. So.
Who said it wasn't discussed?
No, I, I don't.
Well, what, what, I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. McGinnity?
I said, who said it wasn't discussed?
Did you say it wasn't? Did, did you not say that?
No, I said it was per legal review. That's what I said.
Oh, per legal review, okay.
Right, that was Luzerne County.
So it wasn't discussed.
Yeah, but it was, it, it's pending whether Luzerne County is going to adopt the contract or not.
Okay.
And, you know, just, just as an aside, I really want to applaud the district attorney for taking this task on. The airport will be in very good hands.
Oh, I, I don't doubt that at all. I just want to make sure we have no exposure. That's my concern, you know?
And we did, we, we had a very long, detailed discussion with our insurance carrier and our law enforcement carrier, QBE, has accepted the terms and the district attorney's procedures and his plans for the staff. And it was cleared with our workers compensation carrier as well. So we have all those, all those stacks are lined up.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the insight.
Question?
Go ahead, Ms. Sandman.
Okay, Sam, the only thing I am concerned about, and probably it's not a concern because you probably reviewed it, but at C cap this past week, we had a legal presentation of Pennsylvania's new Act 57 of 2020, which really encompasses law enforcement officers and correctional people probation. And one of the lines here says, I'm reading right from the PowerPoint, that it also relates to park and airport police or people that are in law enforcement. So I just think for being careful, particularly human resource wise, the act is, the act is pretty significant in terms of anybody, anybody that is in law enforcement.
You're, you're absolutely right, Councilwoman Sandman. And our director of HR, Angela Gablick, has already, actually a few weeks ago, in anticipating this, this new law, did send out emails addressing this. So we're all aware.
Okay.
District Attorney Sangla Dolce, you have another item, Chair?
I, I do, and I think that is the creation of the auto theft task force officer.
That's right.
Okay. I'm sure everybody is aware of it by now. The short version of a long story is the Auto Theft Prevention Authority has, they actually approached our office and asked if we would be interested in having a position that was fully funded by a grant. We went back and forth, disputed what would be available to us as far as budgetary concerns. As with the airport, I'm sure everybody is aware, it, it isn't like we aren't busy enough. It isn't like we needed more work. We had the opportunity to get an auto theft officer into our county that cost our taxpayers nothing. It is fully funded by that authority, and that goes to salary benefit vehicle. It actually gives us an opportunity to get equipment such as license plate readers, you know, connections to other auto theft officers. They have the opportunity not just to work stolen cars, but any incident where a vehicle is involved. So we're talking about homicides, drug deals. It's basically a no-brainer. They have a budget that far exceeds what we have budgeted to spend. I can tell you that we have already gotten resumes from extremely qualified individuals. My goal, as always, is to ensure that it doesn't cost our taxpayers money. And not to say that that'll never happen, but if it's going, if there's a position that's going to cost our taxpayers money, obviously, that's, that's a matter that warrants very serious consideration by council and myself. But this was brought to us as a grant that is fully funded, that it's, you know, not, not close to liability for the county. So it involves the county basically moving to create this position that, just like our drug task force is fully funded. So I'm hoping that the county will be on board. We have an opportunity really to advance a lot of crime prevention in any way that involves a vehicle. involves a vehicle.
Questions? Okay, thank you for hanging on with us, District Attorney Samuel Goch, you appreciate it. Moving down to number six.
My pleasure. Thank you all for your, for your consideration.
Thank you. Number six, the ADP contract, Ms. Crocker.
I think I'll take it, I think I'll take it, Mr. McGinnley, it's fine.
That's fine, Mrs. Swetts, go ahead.
Sure, so as I said in the email to council, this is a contract that really needs to be determined. I went through, since I just talked on the mid-year report, and in the twenty twenty-one budget, there's a hundred and thirty thousand for ADP. I looked at the other contractual services for budget and finance. So ADP's someone we had since June first, twenty seventeen. They did accomplish their major goal, which was to get us on an arrears payroll cycle. We had talked about that for many years, and we finally got to, you know, we're paying in arrears, the period ends the Thursday before, nobody's getting prepaid, and that was one of the main objectives, and that was already accomplished. The other thing they do is, just like any third party, I would say that payroll is a specialty. It doesn't mean we can't have an employee. You'll see things with, we saw changes in the child tax credit. I would love if there was someone that we could have an employee and we can go to a firm not to be a data processor, but just like you would with the individual taxpayer, to make sure that we're hitting every requirement for new federal, new federal and state guidelines, any kind of new changes from the president or the legislature. And those are the kind of things that I said even as division head, I have no experience in. I'm not a payroll expert. I said it when we did the first contract. So in twenty eighteen, county council agreed to an eighteen-month extension to get the ADP contract on the year-end cycle. The question to be determined by our office of law and ADP before the next meeting is, is June first the start date? Is November twenty-eighth when we actually implemented the service? Because obviously, there was implementation time, that's the go-live date. So the question becomes, can this contract go into twenty twenty-two? And I would argue that if council majority doesn't want it, I would need to know sooner rather than later, and that's why it's on the discussion list. I would agree, just like everything we've brought up and that council's brought up, that the normal protocol would be the budget process. But if county council does not approve this, I do not want to be scrambling on December fifteenth to get a body in the door on January second. It's not fair to HR, it's not fair to our team. So unfortunately, the way I read the contract is that it ends in June first of twenty twenty-two. That's not feasible to anyone. So what we're looking at with ADP is, can we go to December thirty-first? If that's the case, what's the price? And then put that in front of council, that would be my recommendation. If we can, I would like council to make a determination as soon as possible, if we're going to go with in-house employees, to get people trained or to get as qualified people as possible in-house to handle this payroll function. I did talk with ADP after the agenda submitted and before the meeting, they have assured us, and we will pay for it, it's not, you know, a free service, we've paid all along, that if we were to go away, they would still obviously handle the W twos for that year. So if in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, we decide ADP's done, they still, that January, would get out the W twos for the prior year at the set rate of the old contract. So that would be handled, our office wouldn't have that task, but every other task from January to the end of the year, not just preparing the normal bi-weekly filings and keeping up the changes, but also the quarterly reports, working with Berkheimer on local municipalities, working on people that, any kind of tax issue, whether it's local, state, or federal, we run through ADP, and they handle most of them. Some of them, they'll say, that's, you have to work with Berkheimer, that's a local issue. So my thinking would be, you know, number one, is it allowable? So I need both ADP and our office a lot to say, can we go to the end of the year? If that's the case, that would be my recommendation, and I'll put together a detailed agenda submitted. If not, then we need to move rather quickly. Counselor earlier this evening was talking about getting Sharon Lawrence's position filled as the assistant, and I think payroll, whether it's one person, three people, two people, somewhere in between, is something that we need to get somebody in the door quickly if we're not going to move forward. So I just kind of wanted to get on the radar. I don't have all the answers. I will in two weeks. We've had some conversations, but both our office of law and ADP contract and attorneys need to look at this to make sure that everyone agrees we can do a one-year. And if that's not allowable, move forward. So that's really what I have. I'll have, like I said, I'll write the agenda submitted for the next meeting. And I also believe that there's a sixty-day opt-out. So again, I'm not the attorney, and I will turn it over to our attorneys for the next meeting, but I believe if we're going to opt-out, we need to let them know by the end of September. So this was kind of to get it on your radar. Next time, if we go through the normal protocol or something gets tabled, we still have a little bit of time, but the sooner the decision's made, the better, so we can move forward with payroll services for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, Mr. Swetts, when you put the agenda submitted together, I think it would be important to provide as many dates as possible, number one, the costs involved, whether they be extension of the contract or hiring of personnel, so that we have, we know what those options are and what kind of compensation and monies we're looking at. And then I think if you put that together, maybe have a few different options, we can bring it back to the work session, and then council can discuss it in more detail, and then hopefully, with all the two weeks, make a decision.
We will, we, we will definitely have multiple options for council to consider, and I, I just want to say that we do, we're seeking and we want council's in, in, input on this to go forward.
Yep, I have a couple of questions on this. This essentially was outsourcing the work of payroll that had been done by the county until June, well, until late November, twenty seventeen. And so when you outsourced the work to ADP, did we eliminate any positions in budget and finance?
No, we didn't, because one of the things that we had was, we still had to, you know, prepare the information. ADP, as with most vendors, is a data processing company, and they get the federal updates way quicker than I would. But again, we still need to process hours, pay codes, all that stuff, and, and provide it to the provider. Our, our office did not eliminate a position, issue in the original proposal, nor would I think we would in a future proposal. There's, it's a different type of work, but, go ahead.
That's okay. You have, you have the same, or maybe even more employees than you had in June of twenty seventeen when you signed this contract, right? But now you're, and those are the same people, it was the same number of employees that have been doing payroll work here in Lusar County anyway, right? You outsourced the work, so you gave away a piece of somebody's job and kept the position, and now you're saying to bring that work back in, even though it's the same number of positions that had done this work in the past, now you're saying you would have to add staff to do the same job that they used to do, right?
Yeah, and I, and I understand your question, and I would say it's more of a specialized function as it was in twenty seventeen. As I mentioned before, just some of the changes by just the last two presidents, the changes that we've seen on the ten ninety-nines and the W twos, so budget and finance proper, not just payroll, there's been a lot of changes, and ADP helps us keep up on that. Again, we will have other options, we will have an in-house option, but I wouldn't feel comfortable having our current fifteen or so office managers that submit hours, send hours to our one person in budget and finance, and then have that one person be responsible for any federal changes, plus the regular job, plus going back and forth on hours. So I think because it's the same job, but it's a more specialized function, if we're going to do it in-house, I really think we need someone with more payroll and more payroll tax reporting specialty, that's what we get today. So I'm not against presenting in-house or potentially another company, even though we're not RFPing this, or, you know, some, some other solution if there is one out there. But I would say that it's a more specialized field that in twenty seventeen and prior, while there was a lot of work, it was primarily data entry, and now there's a lot more requirements that go into it. And it's also something that is audited more frequently than it was at that time as well.
Great. And then, I, I understand what you're saying about that. But the other thing that you said is that ADP accomplished the goal of correcting the payment in arrears, and I don't think that's actually accurate. I think, I know that was a goal for the county back then, but I believe that ADP insisted that that had to be completed by the county before they took over the payroll. And so we actually completed that arrears move in-house before ADP ran their first payroll for us.
I would say they were accomplished concurrently, but yes, the county definitely had a portion. It was not a hundred percent ADP, but I don't think it's something that county without a provider, without an outside provider, would have had the leverage or the staff to do.
Well, I, we, we're going to disagree on that one. Also, I, I was looking online for the, the original contract. I can't find it in the twenty seventeen, that, contract signed by the manager. Can you forward a copy of the original contract as well as the twenty eighteen one to council?
Yes, I will get all the contracts and the extensions. To date, there is the original contract and three extensions, and the question is, does extension four, if council approved, but even before we put it in front of you, is it allowable until December? Or would extension four exceed the five years and therefore not even be a choice? So that's kind of what we need to figure out. But yeah, the extensions are only like a one-page document. The original ADP document might have been like thirty pages. I can get everything together and send it off council.
Yeah, it would just be easier if you send it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swetts, as I remember some of that discussion Ms. Howke just referred to, I think part of the thought process, have an ADP being the provider in this particular case for the payroll information, we needed a little bit more help to get the audit out on time, and I think some of that precipitated that move to ADP so that you could sort of realign the staff so that the audit would be done on a very good timeline, which this year you've accomplished very well. And I think, you know, you've done some of that, obviously, if we look at, depending on which direction we go here, we'll have to consider that in discussion also.
Well, I think the question is, do we want to pay an employee who lives in New Jersey for, to, and works for ADP to do our payroll, or do we want to pay a Lusar County resident to do it?
Well, I think there's a little more than that, but that is part of the situation. ADP's a big corporation, and obviously, if it's a county resident, that's somebody who resides here. Other questions? Okay, going over to number seven. Ms. Howke sent us an email regarding a job description for the, as titled, administrative assistant for the office clerk of the county council. What I'm going to ask to do here is sign that to a committee, and I would ask the committee to meet next week so that we can bring it back for council the following meeting, which will be the twenty-fourth of the month. And I'm going to ask Ms. Howke to be the chair of that committee. Mr. Haas, I'd like to ask you to be the vice chair, and I'll serve as the three longest-serving members of council. You'll probably have a very good idea about some of the work load that's in that particular office. So, Ms. Howke, you okay with that?
Okay.
And I, just so you know, I'm not available the rest of the week. I have a family emergency. Next week, I would make myself available, whatever day is best for everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we, do we need to meet in person, or do we?
I think we can meet virtually, because we're not making any decisions.
Right.
We're making discussions, come back with some recommendation maybe. I don't believe we have to, Mr. Dulca.
You don't believe you have to meet in person? It's just the committee, right?
It's just the committee, there'll be no decisions done, possibly a recommendation, and I'll come back to the council.
Right. Okay, that's fine, as long as that's, as long as council's fine with that.
Okay. And we'll come back to the work session or voting session.
Well, let's see what we can come out with.
Okay.
I'm sure that's what people are comfortable with.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, public comment.
Mr. Chair, if I could, before public comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Haas, are you okay being, being part of that committee?
Oh, happy to serve. Let me do it.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, forgive me, because I want to ask this while the, the manager was talking about current issues, but I, I saw that on the Market Street Bridge that there was a constituent, I, I think that all of council was copied, and said that the Market Street Bridge is actually the county authority that, that, that were, were tasked with maintaining that and, and cleaning that up. Now, I always thought, I've been serving for ten years now, I know the River Commons is, but I never knew that the Market Street Bridge was, and they said that, that's what Wilkes-Barre City Council said. And if that isn't the case, can we, because I, I remember there, a few years ago, there was a, an accident, and there was, there were a couple of columns that were destroyed, and I know the Wilkes-Barre City, they're the ones that actually found the replacement, they were stored somewhere, and they fixed it. I just always thought that was a city responsibility, but we've done such a good job with the River Common, and I want to give a hat, a hat tip to Ed O'Neill. I just want to make sure that the Market Street Bridge, if that is in fact county responsibility, that we're making sure that's clean, that it's free to feed, that we get the weeds off that, because it's an extension of the River Common.
It's our understanding that...
Mr. Haas is correct, that is not owned by the county bridge.
It is a city issue.
It's, we don't have responsibility, responsibility for the weeds on the Market Street Bridge. I do know that Bill McIntosh did reach out to the various entities that own and maintain certain areas, including the Market Street Bridge in front of the building next to the Bruminsky Building and in the median on North Street to remove the weeds. And that is, that will be happening. We reached out to the, you know, to the, the proper authorities to do that.
That's Pier Street Bridge, though.
I know, but...
This side, Pier Street on our side.
Right, it's Market Street, but then there were inquiries about, about the area in front of the Bruminsky Building, courthouse towers, and, and that median strip on North Street, and then by the parking, where the county parks. And, you know, we, you know, we will make sure that those weeds are taken care of.
And that's fantastic, but a Market Street Bridge, just to be very clear then, is the city responsibility or some other volunteer entity that is tasked with keeping that clean?
I will say that the county is, does not, has not, and will not assume responsibility for the Market Street Bridge.
Let me be very clear. All right, thank you, Mrs. Manager, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Public comment, please.
Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to what was discussed about the airport authority and the airport security, first of all, I didn't know that my email would be forwarded to the district attorney, so I would just like to clarify that I was not aware that the, you know, the security, first of all, when I sent the email, the airport security was only intended, as far as airport police goes, as a long-term solution, not as a, as a immediate fix to the emergency. I just want to make that clear. I never said that there would be a, there should be a police department formed in, you know, as a fly-by-night service or security, twenty-four-hour security... as a fly-by-night service or security, 24-hour security service overnight uh, in place of uh, the county detectives if they're able to do it. Um, I just think that uh, that should have been discussed by the airport authority all along as a long-term solution in coordination with the municipality for airport security, because that is a federal requirement under federal law, that airport security must be provided for. Uh, that is not an option. That is a mandatory requirement, as uh, I'm sure you're aware of. Um, I would like to ask uh, for a request for the um, uh, the things that I asked for with regards to the uh, tax sales, uh, you know, the, the opinion, as well as uh, what transpired for the uh, for the manager, for the manager search as far as with uh, you know, if anyone had, oh, by the way, last thing was uh, for the people who did not uh, get to uh, interview, I, I just want to know if they were notified uh, prior to uh, you know, the interviews, uh, or if they uh, liked, or if they wished to re-interview and uh, they were told not to. Uh, I would like to know the answer to that question as well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Great. Everyone was notified. Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinnity, before we adjourn.
Go ahead.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the sheriff's office. I mean, they brought up a good point with those PFAs. I mean, that's a very dangerous situation, so thank you to Tal, Brian, and uh, your coworkers. Everybody on council appreciates all your hard work. Second item, Rock the River. What a beautiful venue. Outpour of people that uh, enjoyed it. I mean, it's just a tremendous event that rambates people to come to the river and enjoy themselves for a night. Uh, and thank you to everybody that uh, is involved in it. I don't want to go into different things because I might forget someone, but everybody that's involved, thank you. It's a great, it's just great for the county.
I agree. Very nice uh, three evenings. You're lucky with the weather. Everything was great. Motion for adjournment. So I moved, Ms. Hocken, your second?
Second, Jim.
I, in opposition. Unheard. Wilson Harris. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Take your water bottles with you.